Board members, please take your seats. We'd like to start the meeting.
Okay, this regular meeting will come to order. This November 2023, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. We apologize to the community for being a little bit late this evening. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and a performance of the National Anthem by Kilmer Middle School, Kilmer Singers, under the direction of Kevin Sapp.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs' red glare... ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Bravo! Okay, agenda item 2.02, Certification of a Closed Meeting. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convene a closed meeting on November 9th, 2023, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Ms. Corbett Sanders, is there a second? Dr. Anderson, all those in favor. Ms. Corbett Sanders, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Bukarski, myself, Mr. Frisch, Karen Keisgimara, Melanie Marin, Abra Amish, and Laura Jane Cohen. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, confirmation of action taken in closed. I call on Mr. Frisch for a motion.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I move that the Chair of the School Board be authorized to execute on behalf of the Board the contract for Assistant Superintendent for Region Two as discussed in the closed meeting.
Is there a second? Ms. McLaughlin? Seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. All those in favor. Ms. Corbett Sanders, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Bukarski, myself, Mr. Frisch, Karen Keisgimara, Ms. Marin, Ms. Amish, and Laura Jane Cohen. That is unanimous. I call on Ms. Cohen for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Chair of the School Board be authorized to execute on behalf of the Board the contract for Assistant Superintendent Department of School Improvement and Support's Elementary Support as discussed in the closed meeting.
Is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. All those in favor of this motion, please. Ms. Corbett Sanders, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Bukarski, myself, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Keisgimara, Ms. Marin, Ms. Amish, and Ms. Cohen. That is unanimous for those at the table. I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Chair of the School Board be authorized to execute on behalf of the Board the contract for Assistant Superintendent Department of School Improvement and Support's Secondary Support as discussed in the closed meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. All those in favor. Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Tolan, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Marin, Ms. Amish, and Laura Jane Cohen. All those opposed? All those abstaining. Dr. Anderson and Ms. Karen Keisgimara. Mr. Jackson, would you provide the vote, please?
Madam Chair, the vote for that is 9-0-2.
Thank you. That motion passes. Announcements. Ms. Seismarheiser submitted a written request to virtually attend this evening's meeting due to a medical conflict and personal conflict, respectively. All those in favor of approving Ms. Seismarheiser's request? Ms. Corbett Sanders, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Tolan, Mr. Frisch, Karen Keisgimara, Ms. Marin, Ms. Amish, and Laura Jane Cohen, and that is unanimous with those of us at the table. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information may be found at the back of the auditorium or on the website at fcps.edu/schoolboard/BoardDocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on the website at fcps.edu/tv/ch99. Before we start our announcements, I would like to welcome some special guests tonight from the city of Fairfax. We have with us City of Fairfax School Board Chair, Ms. Carolyn Pitches. We have the City of Fairfax School Board Member, Ms. Sarah Kelsey. And do we have your Assistant Superintendent? Oh, okay, he's not with us. But thank you so much for joining us this evening. We appreciate you being here. I would also like to welcome and congratulate some newly elected Fairfax County School Board members who are in attendance tonight. We have Sandy Anderson from the Springfield District and Mateo Dunn from the Mount Vernon District. Thank you for being with us this evening. We also have with us, as part of our ceremony for our Purple Star Schools, we have our Garrison Commander from Fort Belvoir, Colonel Jones. There you are. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. As a reminder to all Board members, in accordance with our vote on September 28th, all sponsors of proclamations will have two minutes to provide comments, while all other Board members will have one minute each. We will employ this practice moving forward. After reading tonight's proclamations, the Board would like to invite those in support of the proclamation to join us for a photo. Our first proclamation, 2.05, Cedar Lane School Gym renaming. I call on Ms. Marin for a proclamation.
Whereas Thomas Lundie passionately and faithfully served Cedar Lane School students, staff, families, and community members for 10 years as the school's principal, and whereas Mr. Lundie has demonstrated unwavering dedication to the academic, social, emotional well-being of Cedar Lane students, and whereas Mr. Lundie provided staff with honest and transparent leadership and moral support, and whereas Mr. Lundie served as an inspiration to each Cedar Lane student to reach their full potential, and whereas his legacy at Cedar Lane School spanned over 20 years, starting as an intern and returning to lead the school through the pandemic as its principal, now therefore be it resolved that the gymnasium at Cedar Lane School be renamed the Tom Lundie Gym in honor of this inspirational leader, colleague, and friend.
Thank you. Is there... Is there a second? Mr. Frisch. Ms. Marin, would you like to speak to your proclamation?
I'll just say, I'll keep this brief because I know Mr. Lundie is quite a humble man, and I'm sure even having this much attention is tough, but I'm glad that we are able to honor you, and your staff has been looking forward to this for quite some time, and I'm really honored to be able to commemorate your work in this way in the building with the people who are doing the work that you believe in so much. Thank you for all your service.
Mr. Frisch, would you like to speak?
I think the applause says almost everything we need to know. So, the mission of Cedar Lane School is pretty specific: to provide small, structured, and nurturing environment that supports the academic, social, emotional, vocational, and behavioral growth of every student. The mission of Cedar Lane is grounded in excellence, equity, and opportunity. By grounding our mission in excellence, equity, and opportunity, we can create a school where all students can thrive. I think if you speak to staff at Cedar Lane, if you speak to families whose students have gone to Cedar Lane, they will tell you that Mr. Lundie has excelled at carrying forward that mission, and I'm proud to second this motion.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak? Ms. Cohen?
Thank you so much. I had the opportunity to get to visit Cedar Lane a couple of times, including the incredible Winter Talent Show, and also had the opportunity to get to see to get to see some kiddos that I knew from my time at Burke School, and get to see how successful that they were in the setting, and recognize that Cedar Lane is such a magical place in large part because of such an amazing staff and such incredible leadership. But as you go through it, you immediately are embraced by the feeling that those people believe in you and that they will not give up on you until they can find that one thing that makes you feel successful, even if it's playing the drums, or guitar, or shooting hoops. It is just remarkable, and it's a remarkable place to be. And so, naming the gym is just a very small way of saying thank you. But everybody who you've sent through the doors over the last years, at the last 20 years, is your legacy and such a testament to kids who've had a lot of things not go their way until they find Cedar Lane. And to be able to leave and have wonderful, successful lives afterwards is because of all of you. So, thank you so much, and thanks to Dr. Lundie.
Thank you. Seeing no other Board members that would like to speak, I just would like to make one comment. I was very fortunate to meet Mr. Lundie, I don't even want to think about how many years ago, 10, 12 years ago at least, on a Chesapeake Bay Foundation Training Program for Principals. And I won't go into any further details, but I think that just illustrates the, you know, his willingness to bring innovative and different types of opportunities to the students at Cedar Lane. They developed quite a sustainability program at their school, you know, under our FCPS Get to Green Program, and it's just, you know, one example of some great work, and I'm thrilled to have called you a colleague for so many years. Thank you. Ms. Amish?
Yeah, thank you so much. I know it's always a challenge with my colleagues picking which resolutions to speak to, but I can't let this wonderful audience go without further recognition, really. I mean, the work that's done at Cedar Lane in and of itself is tremendous in being able to build a bridge for our young people, and it takes a lot of heart. And I think back at visiting the gym at Cedar Lane, which, you know, to my colleague's point, is so timely and fitting that Dr. Lundie would be the name that gets to sit on it, of the joy, the giggles, the hope, the passion that was shared in that space, especially in celebrating our young people in their graduations, celebrating the successes of the skills they've been able to learn. And I hope that you can sit here and take in all the pride, the celebration of you today for everything that you've been able to offer and building it to be what it is today for these kids, and to help them along their journeys. I mean, at this point, it's generations that have come through your leadership and your service at our school and are better for it in being able to live their lives in more independent ways and in ways that are, that allow them to maximize their potential even further. So, just really grateful for you, Dr. Lundie. We're so blessed in FCPS to have people like you, and this is a small token of our recognition of all that you've offered the community.
All right, with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor. Ms. Corbett Sanders, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Bukarski, myself, Mr. Frisch, Karen Keisgimara, Ms. Marin, Ms. Amish, and Laura Jane Cohen, and we have Rocha Seismarheiser also voting virtually. So, that is unanimous. Congratulations. All right, agenda item 2.06, School Counselors, Social Workers, Nurses, and Psychologists' Month Proclamation. I call on Dr. Anderson for a proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas the celebration of School Counselors, Social Workers, Nurses, and Psychologists' Month honors the elementary, middle, and high school professionals, I'm sorry, and high school professional services staff who ensure the physical and mental health needs of our students and that their safety needs are met in and out of school, and whereas FCPS employs close to 700 school counseling professionals, including school counselors, directors of student services, and college and career specialists, who are committed to preparing students to become lifelong learners and productive members of a global society with a focus on social, emotional wellness, academic success, and college and career readiness. And whereas school social workers maintain expertise in many areas, including mental health, human development, behavior, trauma, and family systems, FCPS social workers use their training, experience, and skills to provide services to children, families, and school staff members to remove personal and environmental obstacles in the support of student academic performance. And whereas, school nurses create safe and supporting learning environments as the first responders at schools, promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for students. They collaborate with school staff, families, communities, and other healthcare providers to ensure the safety and well-being of students. And whereas, school psychologists are qualified members of the school team who apply their expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior to help students develop the social and emotional and life skills necessary to realize personal achievement and growth, and to build resilience and a sense of belonging. And whereas, these school counselors, social workers, nurses, and psychologists are highly skilled professionals committed to helping every child achieve, ensuring equitable access and opportunity, building relationships to strengthen student and family engagement, and supporting mental health wellness to help students to succeed in school and in life. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board recognizes November 2023 as School Counselors, Social Workers, Nurses, and Psychologists' Month in the importance of our students being cared for emotionally, socially, and physically in order to thrive in school, at home, and in life. Oh, I'm supposed to say more.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Wait, Dr. Anderson, do you want to finish it first?
I do. I should. Except, there's nothing there.
You want, do you want me to say it? I haven't.
I, I don't. Oh, I could say that, didn't I?
You got it.
I said it. Let it be resolved. I'll say it again.
Um, I will second that.
A little too excited about this proclamation.
Very excited.
Thank you for your second, Ms. Cohen. Uh, Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your proclamation?
Yes, I'm very excited about this proclamation, as everybody can tell. But seriously, school psychologists, nurses, counselors, and social workers, I believe they are all first responders in our system. In times of crisis, we call on them to provide aid to our students, their families, and to our staff. We thank you deeply for all of your work. While we know that your plates are full, you never turn away anyone in their time of need. We still have work to do in order to provide these individuals, these highly skilled professionals, with more reasonable workloads in order for them to engage more deeply with our students. But we are very grateful for all of the support that you provide to our students. In addition to handing out Band-Aids, evaluating concussions, testing, providing mental health support, our counselors, our social workers, our nurses are a vital part of our school systems. So, happy school psychologists, counselors...
So, happy School Psychologists, Counselors, Nurses, and Social Workers Month.
Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to your second?
I would. Thank you. I will absolutely ditto what my colleague said. I don't think I could say it any better than that. But as the mom of a kid who is now a thriving college freshman, I will unequivocally say that they would not have made it through school without you guys, 100%. The number of phone calls that I got from counselors and school psychologists, and just the support that my kiddo felt as they tried to navigate a tough, tough experience in school, there is no way that they would have walked across that stage if it were not for all of you. So, thank you so much from all of us, and everything that you do, seen and unseen, for all of our kids. We so appreciate you.
Well, this is bittersweet, bittersweet for me, because this will be my last opportunity after 12 years as a social worker on the school board, to speak with my deepest appreciation to all of our social workers. It's an honor to represent you here on the board, as well as our incredible health, behavioral health specialists. For anyone who's watched my words over the last 12 years, I have fought passionately that we needed school nurses, that they were so essential for truly supporting and ensuring that our students were healthy and able to thrive in order to learn, and that I've continued to be a champion long before COVID, that we needed more social workers, psychologists, and counselors to, again, ensure that our kids are supported and ready to learn. So, tonight really truly is about all of you who help partner with our families, help support our children, and help ensure that each and every child, regardless of background and circumstance, has the opportunity to thrive in Fairfax County Public Schools. So, I am honored to be part of the board, celebrating all of you and the important roles you play in our schools. Bless you so much, and I've just been grateful to all that you do for our, our school system. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamara.
I too really want to say thank you, because I believe by providing our whole teams, the social workers, the psychologists, the nurses, we are teaching our young people, we are teaching our community to take care of the whole person. And when we do that, we help to remove the stigma that can sometimes follow the need to take care of our emotional well-being. And we help to teach that when we feel well, we can be well, we can do well, and our students can truly access education to the fullest extent and become their very best. So, I think I'm grateful that you're a part of our team, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amash.
I do want to thank our school counselors, social workers, nurses, psychologists. We've lumped them all in in one, but, but it's really to emphasize that there are academic blockers that kids show up to school with, and they're not able to show up for learning without the kind of support that these wonderful staff are able to provide. I'd be remiss not to point out, of course, their role during COVID, and over the past few years, and now as well, rebuilding after the pandemic and the traumas it's left our children with, to be able to show up ready to learn. You know, in the midst of intense global conflict today, we understand that students need these services more than ever, and collaboration and communication between parents, students, teachers, and staff is key to building and shaping the resilient minds that we're also attempting to educate. I also want to point out two things. One, you know, that our, many of our staff, our social workers and our psychologists, I know in particular, have associations, and they went out of their way during the pandemic and the crisis that was unfolding to advocate and to speak up for their students outside of the work hours that they put in, which are already well over a normal work week for their kids, but to really highlight the importance of continuing to support these positions and to expand. And I know, I think Ms. McLaughlin was the one to mention, but my gosh, we're still so far behind on the ratios, and I've been saying this since I've started here, and Dr. Reed, I want to flag this for you over and over again. We've done the budget question year after year to show the tremendous disparity, and I know you all have been imploring us, year after year, to expand funding for those resources. I know we've, you know, you were adamant supporters of the telemental health supports that are, that do exist for our kids now, but even beyond that, we need the people in the buildings who are able to meet our kids where they're at and help them show up for learning and be ready for that. So, I hope, Dr. Reed, that'll be one of our continued priorities in the years ahead. But just so grateful for you all, and I hope all our families recognize just, just how essential you are in our schools beyond the academic piece. We're really educating that whole child.
And with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor. Ms. Corbett Sanders, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. McCarskey, myself, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Kies-Gamara, Ms. Marin, Ms. Amash, and Ms. Cohen, and Rocha Seismarheiser is with us virtually. That is unanimous. Thank you.
All right. I call on Ms. Corbett, this is Agenda Item 2.07, Veterans Day Proclamation. I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for a proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Whereas, whereas Veterans Day is observed annually on November 11th in the United States in honor of all those living and deceased who served with the U.S. Armed Forces to protect the freedoms that are so important to our nation's democracy. And whereas Veterans Day, formerly known as Armistice Day, is the anniversary of the signing of the armistice by the Allies and Germans in 1918, ending World War I, Armistice Day officially received its name in the United States in 1926, and became an official national holiday in 1938 through congressional resolutions. In 1954, President Eisenhower signed a congressional bill that changed the holiday's name to Veterans Day. And whereas, Americans owe a great debt to the soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines who serve and defend our freedom in war and in peace, and their families and community that support them. And whereas Fairfax County Public Schools has strong ties to our veterans as our division serves over 14,000 military-connected students and their families, FCPS also proudly employs many veterans who now serve as teachers, administrators, and support staff to our schools and division departments. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board does hereby celebrate Veterans Day on November 11th, 2023, and urge all students, employees, and community members to join in appropriate activities to pay tribute to the members of our military, and to stress the importance of service to our country as a core value in our democracy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, I will second that.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your proclamation?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair, and I will be brief, because I know we have another item that we want to get to, but I want to personally thank every one of our staff, family members, and community members who have signed up for the ultimate call to duty, which is to serve our country in the military. It is an amazing gift. I am humbled by what our military members are willing to offer and to sacrifice, not only in the traditional wartime, but most often it's in peacetime, and it's in a peacetime in which people serve a whole range of professions within the military. And so, I am forever grateful. I even have a colleague sitting next to me who is a veteran, so thank you very much. We should add to next year's proclamation that school board members are also. But actually, when you look at what our servicemen and women do, is after they leave the service, they continue to serve. They serve as teachers, they serve as first responders, they serve in elected office, they serve in all different forms, because somebody who is willing to sign up to serve in our military services is usually also committed to everything that is our democratic values. So, thank you so much for all that you do.
Ms. Tolan, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you. All of us across FCPS and all Americans honor and express our deepest gratitude to the brave men and women who serve selflessly and defend our country today on Veterans Day, November 11th, and every day. We can never say enough to share our gratitude as our servicemembers and their families have faced many challenges as a contributor in our nation's history. Many military-connected families come to our area for their next job or assignment. In fact, I met several veterans at the polls earlier this week that told me stories about their families moving here for the school system. FCPS is honored to support over 14,000 military-connected students from both the U.S. military and foreign militaries. By being in school on or around Veterans Day, our schools share with our students and staff the meaning of this day and an understanding of the sacrifices made by our soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, and the Space Force Guardians and their families. Thank you for your service. I am really looking forward to celebrating Veterans Day at Colvin Run Elementary School tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. I see Ms. Kies-Gamara.
Well, I couldn't miss this opportunity to give my last, have my last opportunity to say thank you to so many who have served. I truly am grateful for your dedication. As the daughter of a military veteran and the mother of a son that is currently serving, I am truly, truly proud. When I look at our nation and I think about so many people who just are willing to go forward for others, it is truly a gift, and I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm so grateful to be at least in the family of those who are working together to take care of our nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamara. Ms. Amash?
Yeah, thank you. I want to start by echoing gratitude to those in our community who've ultimately put the greatest thing on the line, their lives, in addition to, of course, the struggles their families have to go through, the financial costs of, of war and of having to put themselves in that, and then, of course, the silent struggles of what folks go through when they come back. And it's worth noting, Fairfax County, right here in our community, we have 65,000 veterans that are our neighbors, that are perhaps our teachers, and of course, I, I give a nod to my colleague, Dr. Anderson, as well as several of my colleagues who have family who are veterans or perhaps are serving, as Ms. Kies-Gamara pointed out. And of course, as the resolution stated, 14,000 families who are military-connected here in our school system. You know, whether in the audience today or those at home and with their families and loved ones, we thank you for that service, and recognize too that war zones and places of conflict are incredibly unstable, and we can only imagine the fear of people who live and work in such areas where lives are at risk every day. There's no guarantee of safety. So, in conclusion, rather than platitudes, perhaps a call to action for the dignity that our veterans deserve, to make sure that we do support them and show that support when they do come at home, and provide the right supports and the right access to a VA system that's robust and whatnot, to make sure that we show through our actions, not just our words, our, our appreciation for the ultimate sacrifice they've been given, giving.
Thank you, Ms. Amash. Ms. McLaugh, Ms. McLaughlin?
I too want to just share my deep appreciation. My family in roots were that my great-grandfather served in World War I. My grandfather fought in World War II and Korea. My father, his brothers, many of my uncles, including four who served with the Canadian Royal Military and were killed in World War II. Our family has known what military service means and the ultimate sacrifice that comes with it. And so, I, I also want to add and lift up the fact that my family was, didn't come from money, and didn't have opportunity, so everyone I just listed, they were all enlisted men. And anyone who knows what our enlisted families go through, it is an additional sacrifice. The pay is poor. My mom and her mother were on food stamps and starving during World War II. So, it's not easy. So, I guess what I want to say is that not only do we want to be honoring our veterans, not only do we want to do what Ms. Amash said, that when they come home, they feel valued, appreciated, and supported through the VA and all other ways that we as a society show our care and support for their service and sacrifice. I just want to say with humility, thank you to each and every family and servicemen and women who have given to our nation. We are so deeply blessed by the service for generations before and the generations to come, and I am one American who's deeply grateful for that.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I will call for a vote. All those in favor. Ms. Corbett Sanders, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. McCarskey, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Kies-Gamara, Ms. Marin, Ms. Amash, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Seismarheiser, and myself. That's unanimous.
I would like to invite those here in support of the Cedar Lane School Gym Renaming Proclamation to please join the board for a photo. After the photo, I guess the staff will depart the dais area, and Mr. Jackson will announce the subsequent photos.
I would like to invite those here in support of the School Social Workers, Counselors, Nurses, and Psychologists Proclamation, including Ms. Mary Jo Davis, Ms. Stephanie Gray, Ms. Kimberly Smith, Mr. Brian Hochstrauser, and Ms. Donna Dishonors to please join the board for a photo. for a photo.
All right. 2.08, Purple Star Schools Recognition. I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for the recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Virginia is home to over 75,000 military-connected school-age students, more than any other state in the nation. All our Fairfax County Public Schools proudly welcome and support the over 14,500 military-connected youth and their families who are part of our school community. Tonight, we are honoring 18 of our schools who have been awarded the Purple Star designation. At this time, I would like to recognize the Fort Belvoir Garrison Commander Colonel Joseph Messina. In 2018, the Virginia Department of Education established the Purple Star designation to be awarded to military-friendly schools that have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. Criteria established for the award were designed to increase educator awareness of military-connected youth and help schools structure their support to and for military-connected youth and their families. In the inaugural year, 14 Fairfax County Public Schools received the Purple Star recognition. Schools that earned this prestigious designation received a special Purple Star recognition to display at their school. The Purple Star Award serves to set each of these schools apart for the hard work of the faculty, students, parents, and community partners who stand together to ensure that our military-connected students are supported academically, behaviorally, and emotionally during their transitions. We thank the FCPS school staff and students from these 18 schools earning the recognition this year for the warm welcome to their military-connected students, and we thank our military families for keeping our nation strong and safe. Families, students, and community members in the audience are invited to stand in support of their schools as their school is announced. I'd like to start with Bellevue Elementary School. Bonnie Bray Elementary School. Canterbury Woods Elementary School. Centerville Elementary School. Chesterbrook Elementary School. Herndon Elementary School. Katherine Johnson Middle School. Kings Park Elementary School. Lake Braddock Secondary School. Lemon Road Elementary School. Lynbrook Elementary School. Rolling Valley Elementary School. Rose Hill Elementary School. South County Middle School. South County High School. Wakefield Forest Elementary School. Westfield High School. West Springfield Elementary School. Among the FCPS schools recognized this year, West Springfield Elementary School has the unique distinction of being honored for a second time in recognition of their ongoing commitment to welcoming military students and families. Now, I would like to invite Colonel Joseph Messina, the Fort Belvoir Garrison Commander, to the Community Participation Podium to say a few words to our Purple Star schools. Welcome, Colonel Messina.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, Board, School Board Members, thank you for having me here today. I really, just really quickly, just wanted to say thank you. One, thank you for making our military families a priority. Thank you to all of the schools, the 18 new schools here today, and the 70 schools throughout the area and in Fairfax County that are Purple Star schools. I've got a long speech here, but I'm not going to go through that. What I'm going to tell you is that my son, who's 16 now, has been to six different schools in six different states. And what that means is that every time a family moves, it's not just going from one school to the next with your friends that are going up a grade like you do and I did when I was in high school in Palom, New Hampshire. It's a new set of schools, a new set of friends, a new set of teachers, and everything is new. And this program, it's not just a Purple Star. What it is, is it's a smiling face. It's a friend. It's an ambassador that meets the children at the school and welcomes them and provides them with information, points of contact, and key information to make them feel welcome as they move. So, I just wanted to thank you, thank the principals, the superintendent, thank you very much, ma'am, and thank all of the teachers that are taking care of our children, and thank you for making our military-connected families a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Messina. We would also like to recognize members of the Fairfax County Public Schools Military-Connected Youth Process Action Team. This team's charge is to identify unique academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs of military-connected youth and their families, and ensure faculty and staff are informed and prepared to meet the needs, the identified needs, partnering with stakeholders as appropriate. At this time, I would like to ask my colleagues, Colonel Messina, our Superintendent Dr. Reed, and our Chief of Schools, Dr. Poncy, members of the Military-Connected Youth Process Action Team, and the Fort Belvoir School Liaison Officer, Marie Bailey, to make your way to the dais to recognize these schools and be part of a group photo. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call up each school by region to join us at the dais with their region leadership staff to receive their recognition and take a group photo.
Region 1, Herndon Elementary. Region 2, Chesterbrook Elementary. Region 3, Bellevue Elementary and Rose Hill Elementary. Since Region 4 has eight schools, we'll call up four schools at a time so that we can fit everyone in the photo. For the first Region 4 group photo with the following schools, please come up to the dais to be recognized and take a group photo. Bonnie Bray Elementary, Centerville Elementary, South County Middle School, and South County High School staff. For the second Region 4 group photo with the following schools, please come up to the dais to be recognized and take a group photo. Kings Park Elementary, Lake Braddock Secondary, Rolling Valley Elementary, and West Springfield Elementary. Region 5 photos will also be taken in two groups. At this time, we'd like to invite the following to the dais. City of Fairfax School Board Chair, Ms. Pitches, City of Fairfax School Board Member, Ms. Kelsey, and the staff of Katherine Johnson Middle School. For the second, region five group photo, staff from Canterbury Woods Elementary, Lemon Road Elementary, Wakefield Forest Elementary, and Westfield High, please come to the dais. For region six, staff from Lindbrook Elementary. Madam Chair, that was the last of our First School's recognition.
Three point zero one, community participation. The next order of business is community participation. We welcome all community members who are here and those who signed up to speak this evening. Community members can sign up to provide comments at school board regular business meetings and public hearings on the school board's websites. At regular business meetings, speakers may address any school-related issue except those that have been scheduled for public hearings such as the capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Comments targeting, criticizing, or attacking individual students are not permitted during public meetings. Complaints regarding school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school officials. Speakers should not use personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student or school-based employee. Additionally, speakers should be respectful and observe proper decorum in their statements, avoiding profanity, inappropriate gestures, shouting, and comments that are in counter to the spirit and letter of the school division's non-discrimination policy, which protects students and staff from discrimination based on age, race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, national origin, marital status, or disability. Speakers must limit their remarks to no more than two minutes, direct their comments to the school board, and should remain at the podium until concluding their remarks. Additionally, only the speaker may stand at the podium, they may not be joined by others. Speaker substitutions are not permitted. A speaker may not yield their time to another individual. At the conclusion of two minutes, the microphone or video will be turned off. School board members will be listening but not responding. We ask audience members to be respectful of one another. Shouting and outbursts will not be tolerated. Audience members should hold their applause until the conclusion of a speaker's remarks and remain at their seats, including when video recording or taking photos. We are grateful to those who have come to speak to us today, and thank you for your cooperation. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call our first speaker.
David Browning. Karen Cogan.
There are two sides to an issue, and I know I'm not privy to all the information. What I know for a fact is the warehouse does not have a buyer to purchase warehouse supplies. FCPS Warehouse is out of stock on toilet paper and paper hand towels. In June of this year, the warehouse was informed of our transition from procurement to facilities. Leadership had clearly communicated that all personnel would transfer along with their respective departments. This whole hour didn't happen for the warehouse. A few weeks before July one, the Director of Procurement submitted paperwork to transfer the warehouse buyer back to procurement rather than keeping them with the facilities. I was told the reason behind this move was that procurement needed an additional buyer. The warehouse was not allocated, a head country placed this role, and as a result, we now face, find ourselves without a warehouse buyer. The warehouse buyer is a unique position within the school system, and other buyers are unable to support the significant workload. This buyer is responsible for purchasing approximately four million dollars worth of supplies, which is vital to ensuring that schools and centers have the necessary materials. The FCPS business controls specifically defined for the warehouse buyer are not compatible with the controls for any other FCPS buyer due to separation of duties. This control feature prevents the authorization of any buyer to also procure for the warehouse. I understand facilities leadership made an offer to procurement that could have had come from facilities in exchange for allowing the warehouse buyer to return to the warehouse. This offer was declined by the CFO and the Director of Procurement Services. The solution devised by Procurement Services was for the warehouse buyer to create all purchase orders in advance for the remainder of FY twenty-four. This proposed solution is unrealistic and condescending to the nature of this function. This process does not project emergencies or unforeseeable needs which have already occurred. To add to the challenge, facilities leadership and I discovered on Monday that this unique profile for the warehouse buyer was removed from the only individual capable of performing this function. This leaves no one in the division capable of placing orders for warehouse supplies. Consequently, we now face, find ourselves facing shortages of toilet paper and paper towels. I feel you should know why, since this is likely the first symptom of a larger problem. I take immense pride in wearing this badge every day, as it's truly an honor to be a part of FCPS. I also fear speaking up in this manner carries the risk of potentially ending my career or there may be repercussions and overt retaliation. My core values revolve around fair play and doing what's right, even when it requires speaking out. I believe you share these values as well. This is not my preferred method for handling difficult situations, but I felt it was my only option. I followed...
Thank you.
Richard Clayton.
Good evening, I'm Rick Clayton on behalf of For Public Education. I don't need to be a fortune teller to interpret the results of this week's election. I can read the tea leaves. Chaos, transphobia, anti-CRT, and lack of civility were trounced by the voters, by parents, in favor of inclusivity, support for teachers, excellence hand-in-hand, and equity for all. This board has stood up to crude, personal, vile attacks in order to protect our students and our public school culture for four years. For some of you, this will be the last time you listen to me at this podium, and on behalf of For Public Education, I want to say thank you. Through this storm, Fairfax has remained at the forefront of excellence in education, and of course, we do have work still to do. But I hope those of you, those who have been most critical of your work, will be true to their word of wanting to quote, "listen to parents," as parents have spoken loudly and clearly. Parents want all kinds of books in our libraries, they told you this on Tuesday. Parents want all kinds of truthful history taught, they told you this on Tuesday. They want trans kids protected and listened to. They want teachers supported mentally, I'm sorry, emotionally and financially, they told you this on Tuesday. And they want civility when we do disagree, not performative politics. They told you this on Tuesday. They have sent, parents have sent a clear message, and I hope everyone now will listen to them. And as one school board candidate said in another county, "Make school board meetings boring again." So I and the rest of the For Public Education group look forward to working with the new board next year. Thank you.
Steve Tunley.
I'm the father of a South Lakes 2022 graduate, my daughter's now at the University of Virginia, and they, my son, who's a junior at Herndon High School. I just have, start with a rhetorical question. Is it a great week to be a progressive Democrat in the state of Virginia, and Fairfax County specifically? Yes, it is. Ms. Merron, seventy-two percent of the vote. Mr. Frisch, sixty-six percent of the vote. Ms. Anderson, sixty-three percent of the vote. Congratulations on your overwhelming reelections. Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Keizgimara, and Ms. Cohen, congratulations on moving on to higher office, statewide office. For those of you who are leaving, thank you. This is the finest school district in the state of Virginia, and maybe the country. This school district has more National Merit Scholars than the rest of the state of Virginia combined. Thank you for tolerating the fringe characters who come here and call you, and I watched the videos of this, call you groomers, pedophiles, communists, socialists, cultural Marxists, who create false narratives about the National Merit Scholarship, who want to turn our schools into Christian madrassas, who want to ban books, and who want to jam the LGBTQ community back in the closet. Previous generations, these people would be considered gadflies, but in the age of social media and conservative trash media like Fox News, Newsmax, OAN, Sean Tucker and Laura, sadly, they have power. Must be hard for you to have to deal with your names and reputations dragged through the mud. Thanks for tolerating that. Sadly, our governor and attorney general seem to take their marching orders from these people. Maybe they'll rethink their approach after Tuesday night. And now you face your greatest challenge, perhaps the craziest people of all, people who think boys should play volleyball. I mean, come on, seriously, are you kidding me? I lived in California for ten years. All the boys play high school volleyball. Please, find some funding for these guys so they can play volleyball. Thank you.
Sandra Roberts.
Easy introduction, doesn't it? Thank you Board for letting me speak tonight. My name is Sandy Roberts, and I am one of the team parents for the West Springfield Spartans Boys Volleyball Team. I do have some of the members of the team from this last year, as well as one of the other team parents. This is my first son's, my son's first year participating as a freshman with this team, and our first, our first foray into volleyball as a family. I wanted to relay the impact that this team and this sport has already had on my child, and what I've seen among them teammates, and why I think it's important to foster and to bring in to the fold of the varsity sports. First, for personal impact, my son, as I said, is a freshman this year, and from moving from Irving Middle School over to West Springfield with over twenty-seven hundred students, it's overwhelming. Volleyball has given him an outlet and a chance to get to know other students in the area, and it fosters friendships. It fosters collaborative efforts and a sense of belonging. And I've seen this growth in him even this year. Watching the team from the sidelines, I've seen opportunities for teamwork and leadership. I've watched some of the older, more experienced players, such as the gentleman over there, take roles upon themselves to run practices, to help coach the players and the plays. It gives those players an opportunity to grow skills that will benefit them throughout their entire lives. Teamwork is a crucial part of this sport. If you've ever watched volleyball, it's, it can't happen without really good teamwork. And it helps develop the working relationships between the players, and that's another skill that can contribute to all these players as they grow into contributing community members. Finally, bringing the sport into the fold of varsity sports makes sense. This fall, we had a majority of the schools sign interest forms, twenty out of twenty-five, and we're currently working on making sure that all of them do get those signed. And we're also actively working...
Thank you. Thank you.
Robert Rigby Jr.
I am Robert Rigby, speaking on behalf of FCPS Pride. It's been a rough few years. Now is the time to heal. Now is not the time to compromise with the politics of picking unvulnerable children. The community must determine what are the truly crucial actions for our children, employees, caregivers, and parents to thrive and learn. The voters rejected the politics of excluding and banning those less powerful. The election results tell us that transphobia, racism, and disrespect of disabled people are not Fairfax or Virginia values. Let's listen, work, and heal, but let's not appease. In particular tonight, there's no need to compromise on the names of segregationists. Thank you for listening.
Kelly Singer.
Healing for our communities and our children can't begin until we and they feel safe. A quote from Bessel A. Vanderkolk, author of The Body Keeps the Score: Brain, Mind, and Body in the Healing of Trauma. Being able to feel safe with other people is probably the single most important aspect of mental health. Safe connections are fundamental to meaningful and satisfying lives. FCPS must foster those safe connections for all of our children. The school board and General Assembly elections just passed have shown us, and shown you, that together we have a mandate and responsibility to act, to adopt known and evidence-based measures that will help foster those safe connections for children. All of our children deserve mental health. All of our children deserve to feel safe and connected. Religious students, secular students, students from every country, race, and ethnicity, straight students, gay students, cis students, and trans students, binary students, non-binary students, non-disabled students, disabled students, students from wealthy families, and students from economically disadvantaged families. We all belong here. When our public schools welcome and include all of our children, we safeguard not just their mental health, but also our democracy. we safeguard not just their mental health, but also our democracy. We insist that every child be able to access a safe, diverse, and inclusive public education in Fairfax County Public Schools. I look forward to seeing the ways that FCPS uses this new and reaffirmed mandate to champion inclusion, to foster safe connections and mental health for all FCPS students. It's what's right for our children and our communities, and it's the law. Thank you.
George Becerra.
Good evening, Chairwoman Tolan, Dr. Reed, and school board members. I'm here tonight to talk about middle school sports. First, I want to thank Dr. Reed for her vision, for starting this headway into middle school sports out of the five superintendents that have been here, that I've been involved in this county for my children. During your first work session of your tenure, ma'am, I learned two things about you. First thing is setting the tone with your equity policy. The second is welcoming my daughter to a work session, and you talked about your love of girls' basketball and other school sports. At the same time, you related that to equity, mental health, and also school climate. As you're entering now middle school sports 2.0, a couple suggestions during a tough budget year. Not going to ask for anything new, but expand the items that you already have. For example, boys and girls' basketball. One thing that could be done, as I mentioned to Dr. Ponce, is the creation of maybe a tournament, or middle school in each region, six regional tournaments, that can be done in one day. But at the same time, let's do a home and away, so we can build school pride. So the kids can come out. Actually, been deliberately, you've been here, Luther Jackson with myself, seeing the tournament, and the enthusiasm that's here. And at the same time, as you and Ms. McLaughlin meet with the athletic council this month, please include Dr. Anderson, who will be transitioning over to that role. At the same time, please consider forming your own parent group from FCPS. Because athletic councils build up the board of supervisor appointees. Two different worlds, two different mindsets, two different owners. Not saying they're not good people, but their associations, different politics between board of supervisor appointees and FCPS representatives. Not saying create a new group, but reach out to the quadriplegics of parents that you have already. And thank you very much.
Madam Chair, the individual who signed up for a video testimony did not submit their video. Madam Chair, that was our last public speaker.
Thank you. I would like to just take a moment. We have another special guest with us, a former school board member and newly elected at-large school board member, Mr. Moon. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item 3.02, Academic Matters. I will now call in Dr. Reed to share academic matters.
So, it's a really exciting topic this evening, attendance and engagement. So, we know that attendance is critically important, and we're monitoring that. It's become increasingly more important across our nation. If we can maybe go full screen, that might be, that would be helpful. Research has shown that regular attendance is a significant factor in student success. That should be no surprise. Unfortunately, the rates for absenteeism have really increased across the Commonwealth during the 21, 22, and 22, 23 school years. And supporting regular attendance has actually become a really important factor, and it's a key foundation to our strategic plan. So this evening, I want to share just a few of the overall steps we're taking here in Fairfax County to be responsive to this work. Chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10% or more of school for any reason. And I think there's a little confusion out there, right? That to have chronic absenteeism, this is really about truancy, but it's really not. It's about the combination of excused absences for a variety of reasons and truancy, as well as potential discipline that might be exclusive to classroom. Why this is important, to be clear about our definition, is that chronic absenteeism, as you know, is associated with low academic progress. And what's interesting is that if you miss just two days of school per month, it actually can equate to chronic absenteeism by the end of the year. So I want to take a look at our longitudinal data. I know you as a board, this is something that's important. And what I can say is that prior to the pandemic, our absentee rate in Fairfax County has consistently been below 10%. However, when students returned to in-person schooling following the height of the pandemic, the chronic absenteeism has spiked dramatically. Now, some of the spike is due to actual illness. Our students have come back to school, and in many cases, we have had students be ill, and then they are missing more days as a result of that, either to quarantine in early days, probably in 2021 and 22. But also, honestly, I think just getting back together and sharing new and unique opportunities for getting sick has also contributed. So this, again, at 20% in 2022, and then 19% in 2023, we're tracking our percentage this year and working on interventions that can support better attendance. Either way, as you notice, the dark blue is Fairfax County, and the light blue is Virginia as a whole. So we are maintaining stronger attendance than the rest of the Commonwealth, but still less than what we would hope for. I want to share just a few statistics, honestly, that continue to create concern for us, because the early grades are particularly important. We know that children in the early grades are particularly susceptible to falling behind in fundamental reading skills. And again, that has a snowball effect as children move through those elementary years. We know how important that is, and by sixth grade, honestly, those patterns can get set. And we really, there is a great deal of research that talks about leading indicators in terms of dropout rates for students with poor attendance and chronic absenteeism by sixth grade. I want to share our plan here in the county for our multi-tiered system of support for attendance. And we have interventions similar to those we have for academics. The Tier One, or universal prevention, would be those things that we do to encourage great attendance for all students. And we really think that hopefully that takes care of most of our concerns. However, we do have some students that miss about 10% to 19% of school, which we then provide early interventions such as success plans, check-in, checkout, more individualized student success conferences and conversations, and often an adult champion that works with our students on improving attendance. There are then still students who are missing 20% or more, which puts them in that Tier Three intensive intervention. It's at the top of the pyramid, because that's the fewest number of students. Also, though, those are the students who are most susceptible to having negative educational outcomes as a result of their attendance. It's very important that we work and partner with our families. We know that our parents and families are essential partners in promoting good attendance. When children are young, they're especially dependent on their older family members or older siblings to help get them to school. And it's really important that we continue the strong partnerships with our families. It's after-school clubs, all the types of things we do to build connections. Mr. Becerra just talked a little about middle school sports. It's really important, when students know that it's going to be noticed when they don't show up, it really contributes to that feeling of connectedness and engagement, which increases attendance. So we're really continuing to find ways to support our students in a variety of ways. In fact, even today, we talked with elementary principals about the after-school programming, particularly Science Olympiad and Math Olympiad, but making sure that there are some things available at every elementary school after school for our young students. And sometimes it's those activities that students bound out of bed for most eagerly first thing in the morning. So that's our report on attendance, and that's academic matters for this evening. And I'm happy to take any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. This is a very important report that I don't think we can overstate to our families how much this needs to be paid attention to. Just kind of going through this a little bit, on page five, I think you outlined some of the strategies. Are these new strategies just implemented this year? Or are these practices that have been in the Division for a bit?
I think it's a mix. Some of them are new, some of them are more consistently being applied. Some of them have not needed to be applied in some contexts, but now are. So it's, I think it's a bit of both at this point.
Thank you. The reason why I ask is, in looking at the data that you shared on page three, in '22, it was 15%, and in '23, the attendance rose to 17%. So we're not going in the right direction.
That would be correct.
Okay. The other thing that I definitely want to make sure that I raise, because I have had this be brought to me as a concern from parents of special needs students, particularly special needs students who are medically fragile, who are, who have a higher level of absences. And there's a pressure on them, and I don't think they see it as outreach necessarily. They see it as a pressure where their children are out for real significant and sometimes very, very difficult circumstances. And sometimes the outreach from the school feels more like pressure when they're already dealing with a very difficult situation. I wonder how can we strike that balance so that we can still state the importance of attendance without providing that additional tension to parents going through a lot?
I think you're raising a good point, because when people are doing the best they can, and their child really is ill, it does feel, I think, at times like insensitive, perhaps, and not compassionate in the way we want that to be. So I think that's good counsel, and I'll make sure I take that back to staff.
Thank you. The other question that I had, hold on, I lost my page. On page three, where you had some of the data, I would love to see this be broken down by some additional demographics. Where are we seeing the greatest needs? Are they in high schools? Are they in middle schools? Are they in one particular region? Are they with this subgroup of students? Where can that be made available? I think you were expecting that question.
I was, actually. It's on my Monday morning data dashboard. It's one of our data bytes. And I can make sure I do a, what we would call, I can do a snapshot of that in the Friday letter for you.
What exists in your data dashboard?
We're charting by region, and when you click on the region, you can go to Pyramid into School. And it's the unexcused absences, excused absences, and those chronic, beginning the chronic absences at this point.
Does it also give you a view in terms of which students present in these categories? So you'll have a breakout of special needs students, ELL students, Black students, Asian students? I'm looking for a very granular level of information.
I think that's something we would want to, I would want to maybe sit down and explore with you, because it's all interactive and hyperlinked. I don't know that, I'll have to think about how I can get that part to you. But the staff have that view and that ability to look at that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's it for me.
I will also add, in late-breaking positive news, quarter one in school year '23, we had 15.17% absent, chronic absent, our absentee rate for chronic absenteeism. And this year, as of November 1, at the end of quarter one, we're at 13.9%. So we are trending in the correct direction, at least this fall first quarter.
Okay, that's good to hear. And I did miss one thing. I am very excited about the Science and Math Olympiad. As I've shared with you before, it shouldn't be the responsibility of PTOs and PTA's to not just fund them, but to also staff them. Otherwise, they do not exist at those schools. So I'm really looking forward to see that blossom more in our schools, particularly that do not have that infrastructure.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Kizikamara.
Thank you. I really do appreciate this report. I have two categories of questions. I'll start with the overall requirements of the state. I was looking through this report, and it's my understanding that the state is now looking at absenteeism and tying that to accreditation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And at what point does that become a concern? I just think it would be helpful for parents to understand that.
Well, it was a concern last spring for us. In fact, our intervention last spring involved even doing double-back bus routes and transportation solutions for students who missed an early bus. There were a variety of phone calls, our attendance staff and staff at the schools. It's an all-hands-on-deck to really focus on making sure that we're connecting with families and making sure students are attending. It is critically important.
So, but how is the state judging us with respect to the absenteeism? Is what I was trying to get clarified.
My apologies. Dr. Presidio, do you have a more specific answer to the, I think it's 10% or more? Is there, like when students, it's the number, the percentage of students who miss 10% or more, I think is what the issue is, but?
Yeah, that's correct. And that's why in this presentation, we were looking at that 10% threshold for chronic absenteeism.
Which could just be two days a month, honestly, which is not difficult to rack up.
Okay, and so how are we monitoring that? In the sense that when we see a certain pattern, when do our interventions kick in?
I believe it's after two days, our interventions are kicking in. And we're tracking five days, and that first month of school was a real high flag. We actually had a number of staff even who had their own children miss a lot of school in that very first month, because students often become sick as we all gather back together in the fall. So we're hopeful that we're going to kind of ride a healthier second quarter into winter. But those are flagged right now. And as I shared with Dr. Anderson, we have a dashboard that we actually look at at every senior leadership team meeting at the very beginning that has attendance by region. And I believe we are at 4,000 students right now that are at that threshold across the entire division.
Of chronic absenteeism?
That's correct.
Okay. And since the state, this may be a rhetorical question, but I have to ask it anyway. Since the state has made this a focus, have they also, by any chance, given any funding to address the problem?
No, ma'am, they have not.
I was, I was just curious.
No, they have not, but they have provided some guidance around, around the accreditation rules. And also, I think what we're getting, we're receiving more information to encourage families to send their kids to school, even if they feel a little not well, right? Unless, honestly, they don't have a fever and so forth. So the guidance has looked very interesting.
So I want to bring this other issue up, just because of my other life as an advocate for children, and having received reports in the past where perhaps there may, a child's ability to attend may be indicative of a larger problem at home. And I will tell you, I handled a case years ago where a child missed, let's say, 30 days out of two months, and we actually found out that that child was caring for a dying parent. So in what, what procedures do we have to try to intervene? This was in a different jurisdiction. They utilize some processes that I have advocated for here in Fairfax, and we don't use the chins. And so how would we handle a situation like that? Because I can't, with a system as large as ours, I can't imagine that we are, don't come across some problems like that.
Well, I'm sure we have situations that mirror the situation you've described. And I really am proud of our educators at the school level in terms of their diligence. They know these students by name that are in this high absentee arena, the over 10% and even under 10%. And I know as we visit schools, they're able to articulate what's going on with each student in that situation. And our regional assistant superintendents and that team are working with our principals to identify any areas where we can provide supports and resources and partner with our county. It would be great if, I think, we had more resources, because I think we also at times have language barriers as we work with families and try to make sure that we understand exactly how to support their students. So it would be fabulous, I think, if we had a few more resources to support that. But I am really proud of the work our staff are doing right now in addressing this real challenge.
I continue to advocate, because at times, even though a family may need that intervention- I continue to advocate, because at times, even though a family may need that intervention, they may not accept it.
Right.
And so there may come a time where we have no choice. So I continue to hit the same nail I've been hitting for several years. But thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I also want to point out that there is growing, a growing body of research that food insecurity is a contributor to attendance issues. And I think the opportunity, the recent announcement around the threshold shifting for comprehensive school qualification for school lunch is a fabulous step in possibly addressing that. And it would just be, you know, great if we also had the funding that came along with that for us. As I've shared with you, it's just over $12 million annually to support that for another 40 of our schools. But I do believe that we're going to see more and more research that ties food insecurity and the ability to eat as one of the contributors to attendance.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Dr. Reed, thank you so much. And I do believe our board recognizes that this is one of the most crucial ways in which we really do ensure our students stay in school and have an opportunity to succeed. You know, just seeing from our schools on this one, it is such a complicated issue that a one-size-fits-all is never going to work. We've got to make sure, partner with our social workers in the schools and with our SOSAs and all the other staff, the principals in the building, looking at what's going on in their attendance issue cases. But I will also say that if we don't speak with the families, we don't know maybe what's going on. I have a family member who's a senior in high school out in California, and he's been truant now for more than 18 days in one of his classes, because he's underweight, he's thin, and going to conditioning class is deeply embarrassing for him. And so he didn't know how to communicate. Otherwise, he was just not going. But we have to identify those things and step in. I just use that as an example of, there's so many different reasons on why a student's going to have absenteeism. And when we don't recognize that behavior is communicating the emotional challenges of what a kid's going through, then punishment and threats and all that stuff doesn't work. On the flip side, I will also say that when FCPS turned to notifying families, wanting to kind of raise the issue, we weren't doing the math right. So I also had another family member here in this school division, who the young man was in high school, got sick with the flu, was out for five days. But because it was in the first month of school, then they were doing the, "You've been out for 10% of the school year" kind of thing. And it was a rather stern letter that came to the family, and happened to be my twin sister, who immediately came to me and said, "What is this?" So I, just for a little bit of levity here, just, I think that we have to always be mindful that in really tackling something that is so crucial for student success, we also have to make sure that we understand the ways that systematizing things can suddenly send letters to families where a kid was just sick, and we're sending a scolding email about being absent and attendance is so important. And it can cause families to say, "What are you doing here?" So, you know, I just, I do think that, but it also might be helpful to work with our social work department and find out, are they overwhelmed with their other job duties? And where does this sit? But I do know and say with confidence that I believe our principals and our school leaders very much understand that we've got to wrap around, arms around this and, and do the best we can for kids and families.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders, and then Rocha, Rocha Sizerhizer. We see your hand. You'll follow Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. I appreciate this report. You know, we've been talking about chronic absenteeism, I feel like, for the better part of two years. And it is not limited to Fairfax County or the state of Virginia. It's frankly a national crisis. And we know that our kids that are not attending school or not attending it for a whole series of different reasons, from the, you know, food insecurity to something's happening with their family or childcare or missing a bus. And so it's, it's really a tough situation, because you actually have to unpack each individual. It's not like there is one solution for everything. So I appreciate that. But one of the things that I do understand is that if you miss more than, I think it's five days in the month of September, you are, you have an exponentially higher
Correct.
chance of being chronically absent. So can you, you know, I appreciated the charts, but I didn't see one that said, "In the month of September, what was our, our chronic absentee," or "How many people had missed more than five days?"
You know, we were doing really well for a while. I think, like I said, I, our data byte is dynamic, so I didn't capture, like, weekly static reports. September has got them here. Sloan, I'm going to say 1,000-ish? I'm just, I, that's a, like, I don't think I have that on the top of my head.
You don't have to answer it tonight, but the reason I'm asking-
Yeah, Sloan doesn't either, yeah.
The reason I'm asking is it's a data point that we know can be predictive.
Right.
And so it's a way of identifying those kids that are most at risk and being very intentional in reaching out to those kids in particular. So I would just hope that going forward, you would get a report at the end of every September that would detail how many kids are, have missed more than five days? Is, are there clusters of these kids at certain schools? Or is there, you know, unpack the data and then be intentional with it? So that's my first suggestion. My second suggestion, and I am very concerned that students with underlying conditions have a higher risk of meeting that chronic absenteeism threshold. It seems to me that since this is a new metric that was put in at a state level, and people may not have understood the full impact of that metric, that we might need to have some adjustments at the state level to address those students that have chronic conditions. And I don't know, I know a few people that might be able to help us in Richmond. And just going to, maybe we can whisper in their ears and ask for their assistance.
Agreed. Thank you.
Ms. Sizerhizer?
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I took my volume up. And I don't want to repeat what my colleagues have said. I agree with many of the points being made. I wanted to bring up one more thing, Dr. Reed, for you to think about. I know I recently sent you some information to you and to Dr. King and Dr. Edmondsford about pervasive or pathological demand avoidance, right? And some of the research coming out of that, really coming out of England. And our neurodiversity specialist, Kristin Hayner, knows quite a bit about this as well. But there's a lot of crossover between students who may have PDA and chronic absenteeism. And so I think it would be really helpful to have the team that's really reaching to support these students for whom, you know, are absent more, especially our counselors, our psychologists, our social workers, to really have an understanding of PDA and how that might impact absenteeism and how they can help support the students. Because in some ways, the more demands we put, I think one of my colleagues mentioned, I think it's Ms. McLaughlin, about, you know, the harsher we sound, the more it triggers PDA, right? So how do we ensure absenteeism in a way that's going to encourage students to come? So that's the first thing I wanted to bring up. And the second was, in your slide, you mentioned about encouraging teams to join a club or an activity, because that sense of belonging and connection is linked to, you know, showing up to school. And I would encourage you also to mention that for elementary school, right? I know you mentioned science olympiad, which is fantastic. But a lot of times, for some students, when they get to high school, they haven't had the opportunities to build the requisite skills to be able to participate in some of the programs at the high school level. For example, in the arts or certain sports. So really, I think, providing those opportunities in elementary school not just helps our students get connected to those activities and excited about them, but also then builds the skills so they can then participate in high school. So I really think it's important. And then the last thing I mentioned, we'll say about training for those who are providing these extracurricular and co-curricular activities to make sure that they are really inclusive of everybody to help build that community. So those are a few things I wanted to mention.
Thank you.
Ms. Amish?
Yeah, thank you. And Dr. Reed, thank you for choosing to highlight this critical piece that's emerged as a chronic problem. I guess, you know, in trying to be thoughtful here and reflecting some of what we've discussed in our own conversations, illness has always been kind of a factor, right? I know with COVID, that was particularly poignant, but, but I think it's one of those variables that because it's a constant, may not be worth leaning into as a reason for the numbers we're seeing. And no doubt, there are unique reasons. My colleagues spoke to some of them. But I think I want us to really, I guess, admit or like be honest with ourselves that there are systemic reasons, and, and it's worth going into the root cause and problem solving to find the ways that we're not meeting kids where they're at, given the unique circumstances that they're facing. I mean, especially post-COVID, we know the economic situation in our community has changed. And so I try to put myself in the minds of, you know, a kid who has to provide for their family or has to provide for themselves to survive, who has to work, who has hours that are not standard. Maybe a kid whose family isn't reached with the language that they speak at home. And there, and I can look to more than one direction within our system where we're still not addressing those needs to the sufficient level. Language being just an obvious one, but also flexibility with our structure. You know, so I think of maybe, is there a way to have kids make money in school or get credit for experiential learning that could be happening outside of school through partnerships? Can we expand virtual options that give them more, you know, leniency in being able to complete their credits? I've, I've often, I've felt that in, you know, in working with our schools, it tends to be, well, we need to get them to school. We need to find a way to bring them. And I don't know that, you know, we're going to try the same thing a million times. It's been a challenge. So I think of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, like kids, you know, kids who don't want to be in school or aren't showing through their behavior, and I appreciated the point of Ms. McLaughlin, right? Behavior is, is communication, that they're there. I don't know that a kid who has all their basic needs met wouldn't want to be in school or who has, you know, the adults in their lives that help them imagine a future and see what the benefits of, of taking advantage of that education is, wouldn't be in school, right? So then we have to ask ourselves, well, what, what are the blockers for them to be in that position? And I think it's, it's really worth kind of, I don't know if it would require a team or, I mean, you have some wonderful ideas of how we're moving forward even about organizing our structure and thinking of how we handle the instructional academic side of things. So it's worth, you know, a task force or something that really tries to look at creative, innovative. You know, you, your thing is schools of our future, right? Like, what does that look like? And I know a lot of our principals have tried things, but I go back to that problem. It's systemic. They can continue to put Band-Aids out and try to do, you know, the case by case, but if we don't do something intentionally, I don't know that we're going to see those numbers change. Or at the very least, we're going to be ignoring a large subset that just can, even if it, like, you know, goes down, will still exist for our failure and not theirs.
Okay, fair point.
But I appreciate you considering.
Thank you, Dr. Reed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Attention, item 3.03, Student Representative Matters. I'm happy to call in, Ms. Corbett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone, and happy second quarter. It always arrives before we know it, serving as a simple reminder to live in the moment and cherish the memories you hold in high school and beyond. As for updates, I have news about Technology Youth Empowerment, also known as TYE, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that originated from the SEALs promoting STEM education to the youth. TAI has recently gained its newest student representative at Justice High School along with a large team of over 10 volunteers from their STEM Club and Computer Science Honor Society. In the upcoming summer, some of their team members will also be working in Northern Africa, specifically in Mauritania, and it's commendable that students in FCPS are expanding their work beyond our county. TAI has planned a STEM camp in December at the Fairfax Regional Library and a spring camp at Kings Park Library. And additionally, they will be teaching at Brookfield Elementary in the spring. Currently, they are hosting a camp at the McClain Islamic Center, and they are also in the process of working with Title I schools in the justice pyramid. This includes Glasgow Middle School, Glen Forest Elementary, and Belvedere Elementary, where they plan to teach computer science and electrical engineering. As a reminder for students who are interested in serving on the TYE team, please reach out to your career specialist for the application. As for the community eligibility provisions, I'm collaborating with different students and teachers across the county to provide free meals for all students. Mr. Gabe Siegel from Herndon High School is working with George Mason University, and we are trying to set up a fundraising program while creating long-term partnerships. We also have a fundraising link with Educate Fairfax to erase student lunch debt, which will soon be available on board docs, and any support can make a difference. I'd like to link this initiative with the issue of food waste, which is a common nationwide concern for schools that have CEPs. While it's crucial to provide students with nutrition for effective learning, we must find a way to reduce this waste. A study from the World Wildlife found that food waste in school cafeterias amount to around 530,000 tons each year, equivalent to about 1.9 million metric tons of CO2 greenhouse gases being released into the atmosphere and contributing to global warming. It is crucial that we find a way to reduce this waste, possibly through technology like smart cafeteria management systems. These systems should use technologies such as radio frequency identification or barcodes to track student meals selections, thereby reducing waste by allowing students to choose their meals in advance. These systems provide real-time data that enable cafeteria staff and school admin to make more informed decisions, monitoring popular food items and reducing waste. Regarding the Woodson renaming, I want to express my gratitude to the board and FCPS leadership for their commitment in making this change possible. During the time of segregation, African-Americans faced many hardships, and it would be of utmost respect to rename the school after someone who represents this group well, such as Carter G. Woodson, also known as the father of Black History Month. He was a pioneer in the field of African-American history, dedicating his career to elevating the study of African-American contributions and history. His efforts led to the establishment of Black History Month, a nationwide institution. Born in New Canton, Virginia, Woodson overcame adversity and limited educational opportunities to earn a PhD from Harvard University, becoming only the second African-American to achieve this honor. Along with many other students, it is a common theme that we are in support of the school to be renamed after Dr. Carter G. Woodson to grow a welcoming environment where all students feel a sense of belonging. Lastly, I would like to begin by expressing my appreciation to Dr. Anderson and Mr. Frisch, who were among the notable speakers at our graduate presentation of Learning Pogpole Career Day hosted by Woodson. We also owe a big shout-out to the approximately 50 community speakers, our administrative team for their unwavering support of this initiative, and Dr. DeSalvo, Mr. Stransky, and Ms. Christie Day, who are all a part of the Pogpole Committee. This event was made possible through the collaborative efforts of Central Tech, our dedicated teachers, parents, and enthusiastic students. I also want to extend our gratitude to the Region Five team for their support of this important school innovation and improvement plan. On the last day of the quarter, students had the valuable opportunity to explore a wide array of career options, ranging from cybersecurity and the FBI to entrepreneurship and government service. The Career Day provided a wealth of information, and students gained insights into various career experiences, even discovering internship opportunities tailored for high school students. This unique event at Woodson serves as an excellent platform to understand how Pogpole can benefit not only in school, but also in your life beyond. I strongly endorse expanding such initiatives that help students make informed career decisions. Finally, the integration of our year-long plans into advisory lessons is crucial for ensuring that our, our goals align us, align throughout the school year. We are grateful to those that continue to support our spirit programs, further enriching the student experience. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Attention, item 3.04, Superintendent Matters. I call in, Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Just want to remind our community that November is National Family Engagement Month. And as we know, our parents and families are our children's first and most important teachers, advocates and nurturers, and we really recognize how strong family support is to our students' well-being and success. Also want to spotlight our Family Resource Center, which provides tremendous webinars, family liaisons, a lending- Resource Center, which provides tremendous webinars, family liaisons, a lending library, and support for our students and families. And I encourage all families to take advantage of these resources. The Purple Star Schools Military Family Appreciation Month this month is a fabulous opportunity, as we did this evening, to recognize our Purple Star Schools. And also remember that November is Military Family Appreciation Month. So that, again, I want to highlight the work of our FCPS Office of Family and School Partnerships, who provide resources and support for our military families transitioning to or from Fairfax County. A big thank you to our Fairfax County community for supporting this year's school bond referendum. The projects in this bond package are going to enable us to break ground on three new schools and renovate 25 others through 2028. So thank you, Fairfax County community. On behalf of our students and staff, we're thrilled with the support. Also want to extend my congratulations to our 628 students who were named National Merit Commended Scholars by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. And we're just so excited that they come from nearly every high school and secondary school across Fairfax County. And we're very proud of all of our students and these students who achieved the commended status. We also received a CodeUp $2 million grant for STEAM and computer science. It's our second year from the Department of Defense for a CodeUp 2.0, and it's going to directly support programming in 14 of our schools in South County and West Springfield pyramids, all of which have 10% or more military-connected youth. So we're thrilled with the opportunity to expand our STEM options. So just a quick capture of school visits and activities. I've had a chance to attend football games at South Lakes and Lake Braddock, both fabulous games, and got an opportunity to thank our community partners and boosters at South Lakes. And I think one of the trademarks of Fairfax County is how supportive our families and businesses are. It really makes our student experience something special. Last Saturday, I had a chance to join Panther Orchestra Day. I still have my orange Panther ears, which I forgot, or I would have worn them this evening. Carson and Hughes Middle Schools were playing. It was a fabulous musical morning. I will say, the musical at West Potomac High School that I attended, Carrie, I'd forgotten just how difficult that story was. And I'm hopeful to see a more sort of fun-loving musical or theater production soon. Lord of the Flies more recently was also, anyhow. Had an opportunity to attend the regional debate tournament at Westfield High School with more than 500 students and just a fabulous program. The Health Equity and Resource Fair that was organized by two of our seniors at Justice High School was equally inspiring. And tomorrow, in honor of Veterans Day, I'll be participating in events to honor those who served at Silverbrook Elementary School Community Celebration. And we will be marking the 248th birthday of the United States Marine Corps at Gatehouse in a celebration. So as the mother of a Marine, I'm looking forward to celebrating that Marine Corps birthday. So thank you, Ms. Tolan.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Board members, without objection, we are moving up our action item to item four. And after we take care of this, we will move on to our executive expectation performance measure. So 4.01, our action item, renaming of WT Woodson High School. I call on Dr. Reed for a presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Before I make the presentation, I really want to give a shout out to the staff, and in particular, our deputy clerks, who spent a great deal of time supporting the putting together of this presentation, as well as staff. So this is as up-to-date and current with the data fresh today. So tonight, the school board is going to take action to officially rename WT Woodson High School. And I want to note that this connects to policy 8170.7, which is the naming of school facilities, and our regulation 8170.8. This process is governed by school board policy, and the school board may consider a change in the name of an existing school or facility to ensure an inclusive, respectful learning environment as outlined in our adopted one Fairfax policy, or when the board deems it appropriate. I want to remind our community about our process and timeline. As you recall, the process began in September with the request to consider a name change being presented to the school board, posted as a new business. We then began collecting feedback from the community about whether or not to rename WT Woodson High School, using an online feedback form, holding a community meeting at Woodson, and then a public hearing. After this period of public engagement, the school board voted to change the name of the school. I, the superintendent, recommended two names for board consideration, Woodson High School and Carter G. Woodson High School, and encouraged continued public feedback during Phase Two. The Phase One feedback summary is on the screen. Public engagement was robust. There were 1,415 responses collected on the online feedback form, and you can see a snapshot of the results on the slide. This feedback, along with comments at the community meeting and public hearing, was shared with the board and FCPS staff to help inform the decision-making. The second phase of the renaming process focuses on selecting the new name for the school. As with Phase One, we collected public feedback through an online feedback form, a community meeting, and a public hearing. The online feedback form was open from October 13th through noon today, November 9th. There were 655 responses. Approximately 30 individuals attended the October 23 community meeting, and four speakers participated in the October 23 public hearing. Tonight, the board will take final action to officially rename the school. The Phase Two feedback can be represented here in graph form. And again, a reminder that of the 655 responses to the Second Phase feedback form, the majority, 307, self-identified as parents or caregivers, 172 alumni shared feedback, and we're proud that 79 students participated in the process by completing the form. The summary of the Phase Two feedback, 159 respondents selected Carter G. Woodson High School as their first choice for the school's name. You can see in this chart the breakdown of those that selected Carter G. Woodson High School by group. 368 respondents selected Woodson High School as their first choice for the school's name. And again, we can see a breakdown of those responses by group. The feedback form allowed for write-in suggestions for the new name, and 223 participants responded to this question. 82 of those responses did not pertain to the question. Well, 44 responses wanted to keep the name WT Woodson High School. 16 responses suggested the other name option, meaning if they initially selected Woodson High School, they then wrote in CG Woodson as a suggestion and vice versa. 13 responses recommended a number, High School Number Five, for example, or a general naming concept such as Freedom High School. The remaining name suggestions were not repeated 10 or more times. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. At this time, I now invite board members to ask any clarifying questions or provide comments. Ms. Amish, did you have a question? No. Ms. Corvus Sanders? Dr. Anderson?
Yes. I actually do want to speak to this. But before I get started, I do want to say thank you to Ms. McLaughlin. I think she's made some real effort to walk through this process with dignity, with inclusion of all the stakeholders. It's been very thoughtful. You've been very patient in ensuring that we had optimal times on our calendar where we could devote the time that this requires. And it's just been really, it's just been nice to see how this process is rolling out in a much smoother way than previous name changes. Having said that, I would love for you or Dr. Reed, I'm not sure to whom this question needs to go, to talk about, especially probably you, Ms. McLaughlin, because you've been present at all of the community meetings. When I take a look at some of the options that were provided for names during the first phase and the second phase, I see that there's definitely been more collective support for the Carter G. Woodson name. Is this the sense that you're also getting in the community? Because I don't spend as much time there as you, so I'd like to know that, and that's one. Secondly, I do know that the regulation or the policy that speaks to renaming, while we have this process, it doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be one of the names that comes out of that, that comes out of the feedback. So if you could also speak to that as well, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. You are correct that when we look at both the feedback we received from Phase One, where 1,400 people responded, and then Phase Two, where we had closer to 600 responses, and combining the feedback for both of those, well over 600 were supportive of Carter G. Woodson as the name, and approximately 400 or so were supportive of just naming the school Woodson and removing the former superintendent's name officially from the building. When you talk about the community, and I will actually talk about this more in my remarks, so I will just quickly say that yes. The motion I'm bringing forward tonight, I do believe is reflective of the broad consensus of the community, and I'll go a little more of that during the motion itself.
Then I will wait to hear it then. I also want to point out that a few years ago, when this issue was raised by some of the students, I believe they emailed yourself, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, and myself, because I have a small part of Woodson. The student community really wanted to move towards the Carter G. Woodson name. And during your remarks, if you could speak to whether or not that has changed.
Happy to speak to that as well.
Thank you.
Seeing no other, oh, Ms. Cohen.
I just, I also wanted to thank Ms. McLaughlin, but also say that in getting to have the opportunity to spend a lot of time knocking on a lot of doors in the Woodson community these last several months overwhelmingly, I would say, in particular, every time we were at a household of a student, a current student at Woodson, and even some grads of Woodson, who were overwhelmingly supportive of the idea of changing the name, liked the idea of Carter G. because they felt like it maintained the sense of what the Woodson community has become, but also did a half-decent job at trying to rewrite, rewrite the story of the school. And so they were all, they've all been overwhelmingly supportive. So just wanted to throw that in.
Thank you. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you very much. I think I might have the second-most number of students as the magisterium member. Obviously, the at-large has everybody. I want to thank our staff for conducting a process that was thorough and involved the community deeply. I also want to thank Ms. McLaughlin for working with all of our colleagues to bring this forward and bring it along. As our student representative mentioned, I was at Woodson last week, as was Dr. Anderson, for Career Day. And as I wrapped up my portion of Career Day, I said, "Do you guys have any questions for me?" And the first question was about the name change. And it seemed pretty clear from the consensus in the room that the students are pretty solid behind Carter G. And with good reason. I think it's inspiring, and I think it has an opportunity, you know, I've heard some people say, "We don't even think about the WT." Well, how special will it be to be able to think about the name of the school and be inspired? So thank you very much for your hard work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Kizikamara?
Yes, I, I'd like to just take a moment to put some context here. We had a speaker earlier talk a little bit about how the school board has had to respond to some pretty, well, I'll just say, interesting comments and different perspectives with respect to how we should be handling education. And we also have come through a year where we literally had to defend, and we made some progress, but we still have work to do with respect to being able to study accurate history, not whitewashed history or altered comfortable history, but the actual history. And so I think it's important to put a pin in this moment to recognize that we are doing this in the midst of that, to add an exclamation point, perhaps after an election that, you know, already put a period, but maybe an exclamation point that said, "And yes, we will continue onward." So I thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, I would like to call Ms. McLaughlin for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Tolan. I appreciate that. Yes, I move that the Fairfax County School Board vote to rename WT Woodson High School to Carter G. Woodson High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Amish. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, with humility and deep pride for our community. I do want to first quickly acknowledge our amazing interim principal, who is here with us tonight, Kevin Grede, and also one of our assistant principals, who has joined him here this evening as well. Thank you both for being here. So now you can then start my timer, because I have a feeling I'll need to go back. I first want to say to those who may be watching at home and haven't followed this as carefully or closely, I hail from being a two-generation Woodson family. My husband is two brothers, my three sons, my two nephews. And as a result, when I started to engage with the community on this conversation, and it was happening just about the time that we were also going through a global pandemic, it became so evident that in becoming aware of Superintendent Woodson's private papers that our staff discovered in the City Public Library, that this wasn't, the history of Fairfax County schools being segregated was not simply because our Commonwealth forced it upon our school divisions. It was true. Everyone was forced to stay desegregated. Pretty much massive resistance ran from January 1956 to January 1959, when the federal courts finally came in and told Virginia, enough is enough. But the bottom line is that in seeing the private papers, to understand that the Woodson High School namesake, Wilbur Tucker Woodson, personally held the views and beliefs in segregation, it became the time and the place that in speaking with our community, with our students, speaking with our staff and community advocates, and then speaking with my fellow board members, that we all believed this was the right thing and the right time to do this. And so I do want to say to our community that what gave me the greatest sense of hope for us as even a nation and as a society, is that in those community meetings, where we had some alumni who carry such deep love for Woodson High School that is more than 60 years old, not trying to defend Wilbur Tucker Woodson, but just feeling a connection to the legacy of the school, to sit in a place, a community place, and people willing to listen and hear from one another, to have our amazing families, particularly our families of color, to speak up in that room and to say that while we can recognize what former Superintendent Woodson did to build this school division over 30 years, the bottom line is, his name on that line is, his name on that building, his being the namesake, knowing that he would not have welcomed them, their children, into that school building, how could we keep his name on that building one more day? And as I listened to our PTA leaders, our Athletic Booster Club leaders, our student leaders, our Black Student Union members, the community meetings, the public hearings, time and time again, what I heard from our community was a deep sense of pride for what the Woodson High School name means, but also a recognition that how do we reconcile and bring healing to a very painful part of our county and our Commonwealth's history? And so when we think about what could be more beautiful than right here tonight, to think about how to honor the man Carter G. Woodson, known as the father of Black history, a Virginian who came from difficult hardship, working in the coal mines, having interrupted education, and going on to earn degrees and PhDs from Harvard and University of Chicago, to creating our very first journals of African-American history, to leading the College of Arts and Sciences at Howard University, and currently and continuously honored by the University of Virginia for the Institute of African-American and African Studies. But when I think about the fact that we will be marking the 70th anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education in 2024, that tonight, with an historic vote, with your support, that we will rededicate, rename, and honor Carter G. Woodson with one of our most celebrated high schools here in this county, in the Commonwealth and in the nation, I can't think of a more beautiful time to be doing this. And finally, I will also say that our nation is having a national debate on Black history, teaching Black history, teaching the painful aspects of our history. And Carter G. Woodson is the one who helped this nation start to capture, collect, and present that Black history is our history. And so I can't think also of a more perfect time for our county and our community to come together and say, with deep pride, we are Carter G. Woodson High School. So I hope you'll join me in supporting that tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm happy to follow Ms. McLaughlin, and I appreciate all the work she's put into this and the journey it's been to come to this moment. You know, I think that one of the things that screams the loudest to me in this story is not only that we have to turn the tide and correct what's been wrong, but that complicity is not okay. You know, Carter G. Woodson perhaps wasn't Robert E. Lee or Jeb Stuart, but was someone who enabled, through his power and inaction, having that power, the wrongs of our past. And that makes us reflect, you know, I mean, what are the many ways that we continue to be complicit as a system, as individuals, in various harms unfolding in our society? And this is also a moment, you know, it's meaningful that Carter G. Woodson, being considered the father of Black history, someone who was a contributor to the idea of an African-American History Month, that that solution is through education, right? That he, and I want us to take a moment to also appreciate what that required, that resources and energies and blood, sweat, and tears were spent to not only develop, but then to push forward and try to, you know, raise year after year after year, the importance of creating these narratives so that a child in school's first exposure to Black people is not enslavement, right? And we still have a lot of work to do in that journey and that path towards liberation and being able to teach the truths that allow all of our children to sit within that sense of liberation and belonging that's within our broader society and has been a part of our collective human history. So I'm really proud of us being in this moment. I think whether it's, you know, teaching the realities of our indigenous history, of Black history, of frankly, you know, the realities in Palestine, whatever it is in the larger decolonial struggle of teaching truth, this is a moment certainly to celebrate, and I'm grateful for Ms. Kareem's advocacy over many meetings now in helping bring students along as well, and making sure that we can celebrate this moment. And I'd be remiss not to say, I look forward to the moment when we can fix all the, you know, make all the name changes happen. We still have a few left, so to those who are coming into the school board, you know, I know we still have Sangster and Lee's Corner and others, Springfield and Sully in particular, but it's always an ongoing work in progress. And I think, you know, Ms. McLaughlin, your leadership on this helped show that conversation and bringing everyone along, while we recognize the moment, that there was some dissent and difference of opinion, but that it's okay for us to all come together today in celebration of a historic and important moment that our young people led us towards. So to the young people out there, keep speaking and keep uplifting the truth, because at one point, at some point, it's undeniable.
Thank you. I appreciate the chance to be able to speak. And first, I want to thank Ms. McLaughlin for bringing this forward. And as Dr. Anderson said, you're very thoughtful and collaborative and deliberate way of bringing this forward to allow for community participation, to allow for the board to discuss the issues, and to really have a great process going forward and a really calm process going forward, which is really nice to have. So I really appreciate Ms. McLaughlin. I know how much Woodson and the Woodson community and the school mean to you and your family, so I appreciate what you're doing here and the way that you've done it. And Ms. Omeish, thank you for also seconding this and being a spokesperson for this name change as well. I think, you know, it is so rare that you can have a name change that has such poetic justice involved with it and such perfect symmetry. You know, it is wonderful that we are taking off the name of a person who stood for segregation and putting on the name a person who fought for the inclusion of Black history, who fought for writing Black history, for making sure people knew Black history, for celebrating the history of African-Americans in our community and in the United States. It is just, it is such poetic justice to me that students who can walk in now into a school that is named for somebody who believed that history should include the history of all of us. So I'm very proud to support this. I'm very proud to be part of the board that voted for this change. And like Ms. Cohen, I've had a few reasons to knock on a lot of doors in the Woodson community recently as well, and I can echo that, her sentiment as well, that for many, many of the people that I talked to at the doors supported this name change, who were very supportive of the Carter G. Woodson name, and especially, as she said, families of current students, current students themselves, alumni, really felt strongly that this was a really great move for the Woodson community and for the school and for the students especially. I just wanted to lift up, one thing I really loved about this perfect symmetry is the fact that Carter G. Woodson, not only was he a professor, got his PhD from Harvard, but he also was a school principal. He was self-taught, actually, and didn't enter high school, I believe, to the age of 18, and graduated high school in two years. So, but he was a teacher and a principal before he went on to get his graduate degrees and eventually, as Ms. McLaughlin said, being the dean at Howard University. So it is very fitting to name this school after somebody who was a school principal. So I'm honored and humbled and happy to be able to support this, and thank you again.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak again?
Yes, I'll be brief, since I did ask some questions earlier. And of course, I'm very happy to support this motion, and I'm very grateful for the words that you shared, as well as you, Ms. Omeish. I think there's a poetic justice here in terms of coming full circle with the name Woodson. The only thing that I really want to lift up into this conversation is, while we have a very clear policy in terms of how names should be changed, I don't think we've settled on what names should be changed to. And I wanted to take a moment, as Ms. Omeish pointed out, we have other names to come, and we know that the names that currently exist, from Lee to Woodson, are, were in place to perpetuate discrimination, racism, supremacy over a very specific group of individuals. And so I really want to make sure that we are, when we are engaging in renaming schools that hold those values, that we look to uplift the community that were the most impacted. This is a very great example of that. I know we've had some other opportunities that I think we have missed to uplift the communities that have been downtrodden by these names. And I'm hoping, moving forward, we can continue the path that we are on, starting today, where we're being very conscientious and intentional that the very people whom were held down are being lifted up in these renaming. So I'm glad that you are setting the pace for us to continue along that path. So thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin, do you have additional comments?
Just a quick go back from what Dr. Anderson said, and for those in the community that had advocated, particularly in Phase Two, that why can't we just call it Woodson High School? And that was, again, part of a deep conversation in our community meetings, where we really were able to have for more than two hours each time at the Woodson Cafeteria with those who came out, which was almost 100 people over those two nights. And as we would talk about the fact that, you know, just calling it Woodson High School really wasn't going to take away the hurt and bring healing for why we were doing this in the first place, because the name Woodson still would always have the origins of being that former first superintendent. And, you know, if there never been the famous Virginian Carter G. Woodson, we would have absolutely had to be considering something entirely different. But again, through student voice, through community voice, through fellow board member voice, you know, more than 10 years ago, someone brought Carter G. Woodson to my attention and said, "Wouldn't that be a beautiful name for that school?" So there's, this has been there for a while, but it's so important that every single child, every single staff member, every single family who visits that school, who is a part of the community and the campus, can now collectively, together, everyone, be inspired and uplifted by Dr. Carter G. Woodson. Anyone who reads his life and his legacy and what he accomplished can't help but come away being incredibly proud of this native son of Virginia. And so, yeah, I couldn't be just more proud of this board. You were with me every step of the way. So while I appreciate the nice words, I want to thank each and every one of you, the cosponsors to the forum, and the unanimous support to bring this forward to the community. You guys have been amazing partners. And I do want to finally say, Dr. Reed, that I do appreciate that there was a lot of heavy lifting on the part of your staff to do the part of the superintendent's regulation. And I say that because it's not that the board made that happen, that's fulfilling the superintendent's work in this area. But your team was very collaborative with me through this process as well, and I want to certainly, especially, say thank you to Christie Scott and Donna Nelson Snyder, who really worked very closely with me on this. And again, I want to shout out to our interim principal, Kevin Greata, you know, he's on loan from us from Fairfax High School. And Kevin oversaw the re, the selection of a new mascot at Fairfax High School. He was there at the helm for that. So Kevin, your warmth and grace through our community engagement process as well, I absolutely credit you and your team for setting the tone and tenor for that, too. So thank you so much for all that you and your team have been doing on that. So with that, I will stop talking.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Yes, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, thank you, Ms. Omeish, for bringing this forward to us. And I do just want to say, too, you know, I certainly know, you've been working on this for months and months and getting it scheduled and, you know, getting all the community meetings and everything scheduled when they needed to be, working very closely with our OCCR staff and with the board office to get this set up. I really appreciate it. And a thank you, too, to the community members that participated, both in the, filling out the forms and attending the meetings and reaching out to board members. We really appreciate your input. And I do think it is time, it is the right thing to do, so I will be supporting this motion. And so with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of our motion, please raise your hand. We have Ms. Corbett Sanders, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Bukarsky, myself, Mr. Frisch, Karen Kieske-Mara, Ms. Marin, Ms. Omeish, Laura Jane Cohen, and Rochelle Seismarhiser. That is unanimous. Congratulations. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item 5.01, Performance Review. Executive expectation, number eight, superintendent's relationship with the board. Dr. Reed, I have a request for a five-minute break, so I will let you sit down for a couple of minutes, and thank you to the public, we'll just take a quick break. We'll just take a quick break. Board members, can you please return to your seats? Okay, board members, we are well over our five minutes, so can you please return to your seats? Okay, we have seven members at the table. We are now moving on to Agenda Item 5.01, Performance Review. Executive Expectation Number Eight: Superintendent's Relationship with the Board. Dr. Reed will present her report on EE, Executive Expectation Number Eight: Relationship with the Board. And board members will then be able to ask questions. After the board asks questions, they will be able to provide feedback through the board's next steps process, or may fill out an electronic executive expectation form, which will be included with the next steps. The entire list of proposed next steps and any executive expectation forms will be shared with Dr. Reed after the process is completed and posted in the library section of Board Docs for the public. I now call on Dr. Reed for the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. And as Executive Expectation Eight, the Superintendent's Relationship with the Board, one of the, I think the descriptor, and thank you, Kevin, for pulling it up on the screen, the descriptor recognizes, of course, that the school board provides oversight to the school system, and in fulfilling the requirements of the Virginia Code, the superintendent, of course, is held accountable by the board for effectively managing the operations and academic success of the system. So, the opportunity to ensure regular and positive interactions and foster effective partnerships with the board to facilitate the achievement of our strategic plan goals and overall success is critically important, I think, to the success of our division. So, one of the things that's key is that the superintendent shall ensure the board is fully informed in a timely manner about matters relating to board work and significant division concerns. And then there are a number of, actually eight items, that are included that are very specific. And since these are online, I know our community can read it, and our board is familiar with these. So, I will move to the interpretation. This interpretation requires, of course, the superintendent provide regular, thoughtful, and positive interactions and communications with the board, and continue fostering effective partnerships, as it means to facilitate the achievement of our strategic plan goals, of which we currently have five. So if I move to the evidence of compliance, I'm certifying that this evening, as of November 9th, the information contained in the report is true. So, I would, the indicators I are enumerating, or am enumerating, include our regular Friday letter, which was a Monday letter, and now is a Friday letter. Essentially, I don't think we've taken a break on that in terms of vacations, breaks, or other reasons, because we haven't had one. The superintendent, of course, also meets regularly with each school board member. In this case, we've done this by phone over the course of the last year. And there is consistent two-way communication between the office of the superintendent and the school board office. There is a weekly meeting with the school board chairs, which set agendas and problem-solve other topics, certainly. Important issues, media, events, and so forth. We endeavor to get those out to board members prior to any more public notice. And as you know, we also provide email notifications in advance of personnel issues. We also address strategic plan updates, academic matters, superintendent matters, and making sure items for the consent agenda that are required by law or board-approved, along with the supporting data necessary to keep the board informed, are provided as dictated by board policy. The regular presentation of information to the board that could impact our financial condition as a division is provided in a timely fashion. And the regular information out to the community newsletters and staff newsletters distributed via the Office of Communications is also very important. You receive a weekly legal briefing, and as appropriate, legal briefings during the week when there are matters that require more urgent attention. Essentially, the school board advisory committees, ombuds committees, and school board member activities are also a part of this relationship. So, at this time, that is my monitoring report for Executive Expectation Eight. Be happy to answer any questions, Ms. Tolan.
We can start with questions from Ms. Sizemore-Hyser.
Great. Thank you for this report, Dr. Reed. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate the detail. And your information to the board and the community has been really good, especially with the community information. A couple pieces I wanted to mention to you. One of the things that I talked about in this was the Office of Communications working with the Public Engagement Committee to amplify strategies, topics, and timelines. And I think perhaps this is a place, as we move further into this work, and I'm just speaking as the Public Engagement Committee Chair, and I think this is the second time I've chaired this committee, I think there's some space where maybe we can work on, starting at the beginning of the year, of sort of a strategy for the entire year of what OCCR thinks is coming down the pike, and the strategy of how to incorporate some of those into our meetings, so that we, on the Public Engagement Committee, know of things that are coming up, and what the plan is for getting that regular board feedback on these topics and timelines. And I also think there's maybe some space to work together to, especially with several new board members coming on board, to work on maybe a best practices guideline around board's outreach to stakeholders. I know we've talked a little bit internally about getting some feedback that the Public Engagement Committee has, but, you know, getting some feedback from current members about their best practices and suggestions. But that would be one. The other thing I wanted to lift up to you, I'm sure you're not going to be surprised that I mentioned this, on that last bullet about school board members being invited to attend and participate and speak at events, right? I think maybe there's, again, some space to work with OCCR and the school board office now, especially that we have a fully staffed office, on sort of anticipating these events coming down the pike, and making sure there's enough time to get those invitations out and to get those speaking opportunities out, so board members can be prepared as well. So just a couple of things moving forward, but overall, I appreciate all the information you provided here.
Thank you.
Dr. Anderson?
Oh, thank you. And thank you for presenting this information. Before I go into some of my comments, I would love to get a sense of, looking at the superintendent's interpretation, how do you arrive to this language? I just want to get a sense of your kind of thinking of this component.
So, which language in particular?
The superintendent's interpretation? I'm trying to figure out, is it different than a summary? Because when I looked at this particular one, and, you know, I'm a big highlighter, my whole page is highlighted, and it seems to be like components that were just embedded in the actual executive expectation. I'm trying to get a sense of the interpretation component, and I don't know if I get that.
It is, in general, a narrative summary of what looks like a bulleted checklist.
Okay, so it is a summary. Thank you so much for clarifying that. One of the things that I want to raise is, and I know this is an important piece, I know it's a piece that we've talked about when you first started, and it continues to be a conversation. The first superintendent expectation, number one, take direction from the board as a body. I want to make sure I have clarity in terms of when there's flexibility in that. I'll give you an example. A few weeks ago, we were talking about the separation report, and lots of members talked about it, and there seemed to have been some consensus for it to be reviewed. And I understand it couldn't be acted upon because it wasn't clear that the board provided direction for it to be worked on. And I'm fine with that, and I will follow those steps. But in an earlier conversation today, we had a similar conversation, where people gave a lot of feedback, and your response was, "I hear it, that this is important to this group, and I will work on it." But that also was not a direct vote. So I just want to be clear in terms of what is it that you're expecting and when you're expecting it? When do you see the feedback from the group as something to act on, and when do you need it to be a superintendent directive, or a voted-upon superintendent directive?
So, great question. And where I think that through this evening, I think when we hear a conversation that could be a direction on work we're already doing, which I think was related to the attendance report, I'm not sure where the...
It was earlier than that.
Okay. What, if it's work we're already working on or directionally doing, then I think that if it's a tweaking of that, I think we can try to accommodate that. If it's a new body of work that somebody, that I'm going to have to direct staff to do, or assign staff, that's going to take a significant amount of time, or a redirect, or possibly even redo of a system that's been in place, then I really want to make sure there's a consensus before we set off on that path. Or, I don't know if consensus is the right word, but that there's a direction from the body of the board to set off on that path.
And if it offers clarity that when there are comments being made for it to be a directive, I'm happy to start planning for that, just to plan ahead, to have language ready for the board to act upon. It was just a little bit confusing to me, because we had that conversation earlier, and I just thought I would raise it. One of the other pieces that I want to share is, and I actually, I'm going to go with the easiest one, what Ms. Sizemore-Hyser shared, which is the last bullet, I do think there's a significant amount of work that can be done here, because board members are often unaware of opportunities that are taking place throughout the division, or not invited. I think there's a lot of space here for us to improve upon how board members are invited and included in other ways. I shared this earlier, so I'll say it again here. I think there's some space when it comes to the organizational components that impact some of the things for which the board is statutorily responsible, statutorily, thank you, responsible. I don't think we've hit the mark on that. The communication, for me, has to be a little bit more intentional. The time has to be a little bit more, it has to be more of a period for some real debate and questions before the decisions are made. So I will look for that to be some of the things that you are improving upon, because that will also really speak to this expectation, that you are encouraging collaboration with the board. And in some aspects, it is very clear. In some other aspects, for me, it is missing. And I don't want to belabor it, because I know you heard it earlier. But I wanted to make sure that I raised this in this conversation. One other, this is just a clarifying question, because I don't think I am clear under the, this is on page three, where it says, "Facts and other information provided a mechanism for official board notification." What are you referring to regarding this mechanism for official board notification and communication? Is that the Monday letter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you for this. I appreciate being able to have the conversation.
Are there other board members that would like to speak? Ms. Homage?
Yeah, thank you so much. And I, thank you, Dr. Reed. I know you've always strived to make yourself available for all kinds of conversations, and I've appreciated that. I guess I just wanted to ask you what you see to be, it's great to see the strengths that you've outlined. I don't know if you see any grows, if you will, or potential areas of improvement in general, even to streamline, right? Because the directive isn't just here from the board, but it's like the board collectively, the majority of the board, or like the board as one voice and whatnot. So, yeah, I'm just curious as to your reflections on what you would do maybe differently? You have an incoming board, so you have a new slate, you know, to start with. But, yeah, that would be helpful, even in my own understanding of where we are.
Well, I think, you know, the board's raised several issues this evening. Obviously, just getting a better understanding of all the different types of events that the board is a part of, and making sure those things are out there in a timely way, and how do I say, orchestration or the coordination onsite at the events. I think there's room for improvement, obviously. So, and I think... So, and I think Dr. Anderson spoke to, you know, provide, getting, I think, the timing on certain types of conversations and decisions, I certainly heard that clearly this evening. So I think that, overall, I think the clearer we can all be in a collective understanding about processes, then I think we will be able to manage expectations a little more effectively. Because I don't think either the board or, in this case, the superintendent have an interest in not meeting expectations. I think it's the clarity that we can work on. So I think that's going to be important with a new board coming in and the last several months of this board.
Yeah, I definitely think, and, and this, this challenge, rather than calling it a problem, predates you in the sense that, you know, kind of the consistency with which every board member engages with you, hears from you, or, or meets with you, right, is entirely different. I feel like streamlining that could be useful. Some people get a lot of time, some people don't get much time. I mean, by virtue of perhaps their outreach, but I think that that ends up leading to perhaps an inequitable dynamic, which could, you know, build resentment or tension for you even in leading our system. Just mindful of that. And then also, curious about what can be put in place, because even in the, in the lead up to deciding on the process, just the process for how we're going to do this, right, and communicate with you about these executive expectations, there were differences and concerns about, well, what if, what if a minority of the board has a perspective? Or what if even just one or two people on the board have, feel strongly about something and it's informed by their, you know, constituency, their community, maybe their worldview? And the fact of the matter is, you know, the tyranny of the majority is a real thing. I mean, even in the founding of this country, that was a concept, right? So I, I want to be thoughtful about that, too, because I think in working, moving forward with the board being one voice, what does that mean when seven people speak for the body? And then your ability to kind of be responsive to what may be correct, but not always aligned with where the majority will land? I think we've seen that more than once in our division, and I, I guess I'm just sensitive to the fact that some, more thought needs to be put into protocols, maybe ways of streamlining conversation and ensuring that the minority voices are heard, but then ultimately are answerable to the majority, but perhaps, you know, it's like not just compliance, right? Ideally, it would be all moving forward together and not just like, "Yeah, we, I, I achieved what the majority of the board wanted," right? But no, I was thoughtful about all the various things that have come up. So there's a lot to say here, but, and, and I will take some of it offline, actually, to talk to you more directly, but I'm grateful for what it's been so far, and I recognize colleagues as well that this is, this is, even addressing this component is a two-way street. I think as a board, we can also put in place clarity, and hopefully the new board will be able to establish that in their own way, around what we are also expecting from you and what our engagement with you should look like, so that you're not left trying to figure that out. But I appreciate you sharing this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamara.
Thank you. Dr. Reed, I want to first acknowledge that I know this is a work in progress, right? And we're, we're all trying to figure out a balance where both the board and you feel as though we've reached that sweet spot. And I know we've had some conversations over the past few weeks that suggest, you know, maybe we're still adding a little sugar to figure out where that sweet spot is. So I'd like to, I'd like to make a few suggestions, and I, I tried to listen in the back, I just, but, so forgive, I hope none of this is repetitive. But I will say, I personally struggle a little bit with keeping up with the letters. I, sometimes it's, "I'm visiting this school or that school, and this is what I've done," but then other times, there's important reports in there. And so I'm going to suggest that maybe we take a look at, or you may want to take a look at identifying for the board where they can expect to find certain types of information, right? Because sometimes I, I think I've said, and I don't recall what it was recently, that I said, "Well, wait, I, I missed that." And somebody said, "Oh, it was, it was attached to the letter," or, or whatever. And, and I understand that that was an attempt to communicate, but as I have said in previous weeks, it's not just communication, it's effective communication. So I know, I'm not, I, I do want to acknowledge the process. I do acknowledge that there have been, there has been much effort. I find those letters to be sometimes just very, very long, and, and it's easy to lose information in there. So if, if maybe we can have some conversations about specific types of information, I think there've already been comments regarding, you know, when certain things happen, the board needs to receive that information in a timely fashion, when things are expected or, and, and we have made some improvements. So I just say, if we can continue the conversation, I think we will find that, that sweet spot for most of us. I'm not a sweet tea person myself, but some people may be. And so anyway, I just thought I would make these few suggestions and acknowledge that I understand that this is a work in progress.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I'll work on more effective communication.
Ms. Maron?
I just wanted to make a motion to limit debate to two minutes, please. Two minutes per school board member.
That one's not debatable, just vote on it.
This vote?
Yes, it requires a two-thirds to adopt.
This is a vote that requires two-thirds to adopt a, a change at this point? So the motion is to reduce speaking time to two minutes instead of three. So can we please take the vote? Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Tolan, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Maron, and Ms. Cohen. And Ms. Seismar Heizer. Okay.
Take the noes, too.
Pardon me?
Make sure to take the no votes as well.
Okay, and those that disagree? Those that abstain? Is that a no, Ms. Amish? That's a no. Ms. Amish? Can you call the vote, please? Okay, we have, Dr. Anderson is a no.
It was nine, four, one against, so that motion would carry.
Okay, do we need to redo the vote? Okay, let's, okay. So we need two-thirds if the vote carries. Thank you. Okay, so our next speaker. Ms. Maron, do you have additional comments? No?
I don't.
Okay. Ms. McLaughlin?
I'm going to practice trying to be succinct because I think that's part of what we're trying to share as maybe a mutual benefit for you and for the board. I know when I send my newsletters out to my community, sometimes there's a lot of packed information in there, and so what I do right up front is I have the bullet points of, "I'm going to be talking about these topics," right up front. And then people can then go look through the lengthy communication and decide, "Oh, I'm interested in that particular topic, this one and that one." And so that's maybe just one suggestion I would have. I know you and I have talked that I'm so much wanting to get to the heart of a lot of the research and best practice and the ways that we're going to help this system get stronger. And so I feel at times that some of the most important challenges facing our system are maybe in the, the communications, but not always. And just, I know from prior superintendents where they've said, "How am I supposed to read the minds of 12 different elected officials on what you want to see and what you don't want to see?" And so I, I say this with some humility here, that, but, you know, in the end, to me, anything that has to do with our instructional changes, anything that has to do with our fiscal spending, organizational changes to, you know, the, the system's leadership, those are the things that, you know, I would like for, for us to kind of consistently know. That's going to be in the weekly letter. Because it is interesting sometimes that I feel like the things that maybe were mission critical, we weren't necessarily sure where we would find it. And, and again, I say this with humility because I do appreciate that without question your goal is to enhance your communication with the board, and for that, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Reed. I, I think you're hearing a lot about the Friday letter, used to be Monday letter. And I think part of the challenges with it is that it's really hot links to a bunch of other things. And so your suggestion of having an intro paragraph that kind of sets the stage of, "These are the priorities and these are the things that you should, you know, focus in," that, in my mind, the top five things that you should focus in on, or the top five risks. And then also having some celebration in there, too, because all of us are also sending out newsletters, and if there's really good stuff, that should be shared with the community that, by individual board members, I would suggest that. I think the most critical thing, though, is, and, and I always use this as a, a guiding parameter for any bosses I ever had, and you have the challenge of having 12 of us, is the spirit of no surprises. And I would encourage that, you know, you, when you get stuff, you might want to think, "Hmm, I don't want any surprises." Because it's, that's the only thing I would suggest, is really, if I don't get surprised, and it's impossible not to have some surprises, but limit the surprises, and it makes a very good partnership.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Frisch?
All right. I have some good things to say about the Friday email. I think, well, before I get to that, I think process makes perfect, and if we can institute some processes around some of the communication, I think everybody will be happier and everybody will be more clearly understood. In terms of the Friday letter, I'm grateful that it's on Friday now because it gives me more time away from the workday to focus on it, as opposed to when it was on Mondays. I appreciate the hyperlinks that are used to drop me down to the various sections of it. I appreciate the toolkits that we get from OCCR in there every week that help us find different things to spotlight in our newsletters and in our social media posts. I appreciate that the documents that are attached to the news, to the weekly email are clearly labeled. That wasn't always the case previously. And I think what I appreciate most of all is that there are really two emails that I have to read every single week, your Friday email and the chair's email. And those things set me up for success in terms of understanding what's going on. And so I try as best I can to do that every single week. And when I am capable of doing it, I have a more informed discussion with my colleagues. So I think there are always ways to make things better in terms of format and structure, but I'm very pleased with some of the changes that have come into the Friday newsletter. And I, I hate to say it, but I don't read the other email that you send every week too often.
I know. It's okay.
But I think you should combine them into one, like, a book at the end of the year, maybe?
Maybe.
Or maybe a quarterly journal?
Maybe with recipes?
I will say, my partner was in it once, and he was super excited about it and got lots of emails from his friends all over the division.
Yeah.
When you stopped by Chantilly. So I appreciate that and look forward to partnering with you in the future.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to follow that because I also like the Friday letter. And it is very dense, but it has just the competitive information and what's going on in the district and what new reports are coming in. It has the contracts that we need to pay attention to. It's kind of a large smattering, if you will, of various topics, but as Mr. Frisch pointed out, things that, you know, I find as a board member is important to stay on top of, and it's all in one place. And it is, we do have, there is like an appendix at the top of it, so that is super helpful. I also just wanted to also compliment you on the addition of academic matters to our board meetings. You know, that was an idea that you brought to us, and I think that has also really helped me just on what are topical issues going on and getting some data and information around them, which I find really helpful as someone, you know, going out into the community, those are the topics that a lot of times our community members are talking about, so I really do appreciate that. I was kind of thinking with some of our recent conversations, you know, I think we all went through the strategic plan process together, and there was so much communication around that. And, you know, the strategic thinking associated within the work sessions and things that you had with the board members, there was, you know, I really felt included in that whole planning process. And I think that now as we're going into implementing that strategic plan, maybe we just need to think a little bit more about what are the, the strategic things that are happening? And, you know, I, there was a list someone gave, instruction fiscal organizational changes, I think it was Ms. McLaughlin, I think that was a pretty good list, because those are super exciting things that are happening in the division. And I know there's so much and it's all happening quickly, but those are some of the strategic things that board members really like to know about. So I'm very happy to work closely with you to, you know, try to get that information out to board members in a more timely manner.
Great.
So thank you very much for the report this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, as a reminder to board members, you need to enter any next steps that you have out of the conversation this evening by 5:00 PM on November 14th. And then, as we are always reminded by our clerks, any vote on that, that, you need to go in and vote on any of those that you support by 5:00 PM on November 17th. If you are electing to use the electronic executive expectation form, please fill it out and provide it to the clerk no later than 5:00 PM on Friday, November 17th. There is a link in the script here to the next steps process, but we will also get that out to everyone again. Okay, agenda item number six, consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda item seven, new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote on these items this evening, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. New business items are on the screen. Agenda item eight, board committee reports. I call Ms. Kies-Gamara for a report on the CPDC committee.
Thank you. The CPDC met on both October 5th and October 25th this, last month. I'm grateful to my colleagues, Dr. Riccardi Anderson and Ms. Tamara Darrenett-Kofax for participating, as well as Dr. Carolyn Pitchis from the City of Fairfax School Board, and FPAC Chair Katie Herman, as well as our new Chief of Facility Services and Capital Programs, Janice Seismansky. Both meetings served as a... Both meetings served as a session, an in-depth discussion to finalize the community engagement process for capital projects. I want to thank staff members from the facilities teams as well as from the Office of Communications, particularly Kristy Scott, for their ongoing work on this project. We began this work almost two years ago. Our primary goals were to establish consistency in communication and engagement for all capital projects, improve communication and outreach, encourage public participation in the process, and building community understanding and awareness of the capital improvement process. Our next steps. The framework will be entered as new business on November 20th. We look forward to presenting our finished product to you during the work session on November 28th. Our committee members are available to meet with you in two-by-two conversations to answer any questions or gather initial feedback from you prior to this work session. And from that point, it is my understanding that the framework will be included on the agenda of the December 4th meeting for board action. I will just add that I appreciate a couple of board members that were able to serve as our trials. Our chair, Ms. Tolan, and Dr. Anderson both brought in some of the projects that were in their community. And so it was really allowed us to work a little bit as a think tank to try to figure out how to improve the process for everyone as well as to provide a more fidelity in the process. So I think that we made a lot of progress, particularly with staff. Certainly didn't do it by ourselves. But having FPAC available to us as well as staff and real-life problems, I think will help in the long run. At least, that's my hope. So I thank you so much, and I look forward to our discussions later this month.
Thank you. I call Ms. Maron for a report on the governance committee.
Yes, we were able to send forward to the board that went on to new business tonight, seven policies that will have no changes. They were all dealing with HR, human resources. And the superintendent did confirm that they are pretty standard policies and they don't have complications with forthcoming collective bargaining or other plans going on. So those are on the docket, and I hope that the board will push those through in our next meeting. There were also a few other policies that had come up, and all of these are on the 1031 board documents page regarding changes to a few of those policies. Some just needed minor changes, and a few, we're gonna get some more in-depth changes. And I have emailed all of this in detail to the board. The biggest thing is that we want to do is, well, we're gonna try and get another, another governance meeting in before the final meetings for this board for the year. So yes, please do, oh, and we talked actually at length about the fire escape plans for students with disabilities. And it was a really interesting conversation that resulted in Dr. Reed suggesting that she is going to actually meet with the fire marshal to talk about, you know, what, what's the, you know, the view at this time. And we certainly want to be sensitive to, you know, best practices. So it was really good. So yes, please do read what I sent you, and then I'm happy to collect input regarding draft calendar policy that had been shared, so that can be used in practice sooner than later. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call Ms. Seismar Heizer for a report on the PAC committee.
Great, thank you very much. And given the late hour, I will try to be brief. Public engagement committee met on November 2nd, and we got quite a bit of good work done. We talked about the virtual participation for our advisory committees that was emailed out to the board and on the new business for tonight for a vote for next time to allow them to set rules for this year so they can take advantage of some of their ability to participate virtually. And then we will also ask for a work session as part of our advisory committee handbook, which PAC has also finished, to discuss going forward after this school year. We also talked about our public comment procedures to make more uniformity between our video and our in-person comments. And we also discussed the public hearings, their frequency, participation, minimum participant, sign-up deadline to conform with the public comment deadline. And this work will be coming forward to the board. And then we also went to discuss the school board's standing committees and obtaining feedback from members as to what committee should exist. This is work that was started in the previous iteration of PAC. And I know Dr. Anderson and Mr. Frisch had committed to gathering input and had gathered input from some board members, and we'll be refreshing this input and reaching back out to you as well. And our next meeting will be December 5th. So that is our update from public engagement. Oh, and happy divulley, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Heizer Heizer. Okay, with that, I would like to again extend a big thank you to our deputy clerks that stepped up to run our meeting today. Thank you so much for all of your help. Okay, so at this point, agenda item nine, board matters, without objection. We will skip this portion of our agenda. Okay, seeing, seeing no objection. This meeting is adjourned.